Good evening to you all. If you please get to your seats, we'd most appreciate it. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Monday, June 12th, 2017 Meeting of the Falls Church City Council. If you'd please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, sir. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
Sure. Okay, do we have a motion regarding the meeting agenda?
I move to amend the meeting agenda to add TR-17-19 in Section 6.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Our meeting agenda has been amended. Okay. The first item on our agenda for tonight is a proclamation, a very special proclamation, regarding one of our colleagues, Ira Kaelin, and his service to the city. And we're delighted to have Ira with us this evening. I know some of you may want to speak, and we'd be delighted to hear from anyone in the audience who would like to say a few words about Ira. But I'm going to start with the proclamation. Whereas Ira Kaelin served on the City Council from July 2010 to December 2013, whereas Mr. Kaelin served on the City Council School Board Liaison Group and the Economic Development and Budget and Finance Committees; whereas Mr. Kaelin has been an advocate for the city within the Washington Metropolitan Region, serving on the Washington Metropolitan Council of Governments Metropolitan Development Policy Committee, Region Ford, and Transportation Planning Board. Mr. Kaelin has generously shared his professional expertise in the area of finance in the service of making Falls Church a better city. Whereas City Council wishes to offer its sincere thanks and appreciation for the many years of public service Ira Kaelin has provided to the City of Falls Church. Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim that the Falls Church City Council honors Ira Kaelin for his service to the City of Falls Church. So Ira, before we get you up here, I would just like to say a few remarks if I could. As we get older, we think about what's important in life. And to me, that's family, friends, and community. And you have certainly spent a substantial portion of your time here in the city trying to make this a better place. You've always had the best interest of the city at heart. I think all of us may have disagreed from time to time, but I think it's difficult to question your desire to make this a better place. And I would say you've done an awful lot for the city as well. Just a few things, a few examples I may cite. We've been talking about the new school site recently. Ira, as some of you may know, was involved in the sale of the water system in Fairfax County, was actually one of the folks who was the representative of the city to the mediation. And the mediation was to resolve the litigation with Fairfax County. But what came out of that mediation was the school land being brought into the city. So what we've been talking about the past weeks and months, and maybe years, has been what do we do up at the school site, and how might we get commercial development there? Well, if it was in Fairfax County like Mount Daniel, we might not be having any of that conversation, or it might be a much different conversation. So things that maybe at the time didn't seem really critical to the future of the city. I think you can see how something like that has really, I think, changed the trajectory of the high school, what we might be doing there, and how we might be able to pay for it. Ira was also very involved in the Harris Teeter project and getting that to come to the city. It was one of his -- he was Chair of the Economic Development Committee of the Falls Church City Council, and spent substantial efforts in trying to shape that project into what it is today, which is a great success. In addition, he was involved with a number of finance issues. I think probably most of us will think, most of that, when we think of Ira, is his work with trying to make the city's budgets and finances more transparent, and to raise the bar in how we did business financially. I know, Ira, you traveled a lot when you worked for the bank. He, I'm sure, was a frequent flyer. Since he's got off council, he's been a frequent foyer, submitting a number of foyer requests to the city, but he's always, has never given up on trying to make the city a better place. So Ira, just, I want to thank you for all the great work you've done, and we all really appreciate it. I know there's many others who would like to say a few words as well, and so I would like to invite anyone else who wishes to speak. I know we've got a couple of filled-out speaker slips, but anyone who'd like to speak is welcome to come on up. I think Karen Sharp, Ira, you're welcome to come up too. Would you like to come up?
I'll come up next. Don't tell me to wait.
Okay, well, let's start with Karen then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Karen Sharp, 408 Southwest Street. I got to know Ira as a person who was bringing very strong advocacy for more scrutiny, more transparency for the budget and finance for the city. That was a bit uncomfortable at times for someone who was serving in an elected position, as I was for many years. But the high transparency and the high confidence that results from having such transparency, I think, served us very well. And I want to congratulate Ira on bringing that to us, not just during his City Council tenure, but before and after. And I think we have stronger community support for our local government as a result of that higher level of scrutiny, particularly in the area of employee pensions. I'm very grateful to Ira for the attention that he brought to that. As many of you know, it's a trouble spot for states and localities throughout the country. Ira's solution was not the typical one, to try to strip away the benefits of the public employees who were subject to those pensions. Instead, he said that we should invest more carefully in supporting those benefits. And we have a much better funded position in our benefits for our public employees as a result of Ira's advocacy in that area. That expressed a great deal of confidence in our local economy, as well as the national economy, that it would come back from great market declines in 2001 and 2008, but it also expressed a great confidence in our public servants. That may not be as well appreciated as it should. Thank you, Ira, for your service.
Okay. Our next speaker is Richard McCall.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here on behalf of CBC. I'm the President of CBC, to support the proclamation honoring Ira Kaelin. I think we all appreciate his public service and his commitment to this community. I can remember one instant, one town hall meeting we had where Ira gave a very cogent, very compelling explanation of the water issue with Fairfax County. And we appreciate very much all the work that went into it on your behalf, on our behalf. Finally, Ira, thank you for Harris Teeter. I am a patron about five times a week up there. So it's a magnificent accomplishment, so best of luck to you. Take care.
Okay, are there other folks in the audience who would like to speak? You don't need to fill out a speaker slip. If there's anyone who would like to speak, Ms. Wodisca, please, come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter, members of council. I'm delighted to speak on behalf of Mr. Ira Kaelin. I had the opportunity to get to know Ira when I was the Chair of the School Board. Many of you know, as has been spoken this evening, of Mr. Kaelin's high expectations for a strong return on a taxpayer's investment. He was known for watching every dollar, nickel, and cent while I was on the school board. He was fiscally conservative, frugal, some might even say tough or salty. He was a great partner, as well, to the schools. Over the years, I had the opportunity to get to know a softer side of Mr. Kaelin, and one that is not as often seen in the public eye. We shared a deep love and appreciation for education, and to know Mr. Kaelin is to know his story. His parents were poor. His father, his education was cut short by the Great Depression. And when it came time to deal with school facilities here in the City of Falls Church, I was able to count on Mr. Kaelin to understand that school facilities weren't a one-year decision, or a five-year commitment, or a 10-year, but they were 30-year, and in some times, these decisions would far exceed our own lifetime. As was spoken this evening, he was instrumental in negotiating the high school site, but he was also instrumental in helping secure the expansion at TJ. That project, that problem, when I was on the board, as you remember, Mr. Kaelin, was a $70 million problem, that with your help, we found a $10 million solution, and saving the taxpayers millions of dollars. You know, education is always a team sport. It takes every member of council. And when the chips were down and the school board needed the votes so that we could work with the state to get support from other counties, or from other community members, we were able to count on Mr. Kaelin to vote for school construction projects. And I know he has a great deal of pride when he walks by those school facility sites, and we joke about it still today. So I want to thank Mr. Kaelin for his service, for his commitment, and for taking a long-term view on school facilities and supporting us when we needed it the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. I just wanted to add a word of appreciation to Mr. Kaelin, who has always been very supportive of city staff, and so on behalf of staff, I wanted to express appreciation for that. And personally, to state that I've learned a great deal from Mr. Kaelin in our conversations. Oftentimes, my education was aided with a rhetorical two-by-four or other blunt instrument, and sometimes I needed that, but I have learned a great deal from working with you, and I've appreciated that very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak at this time? How about on council? Does anyone on council have anything to add to what's been said this evening? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that, you know, meetings have just not been the same since Ira left the council. It was a well-known parlor game in Falls Church when both Mr. Kaelin and I served together and sat next to each other. It was how long into the meeting would it take before I said or did something that would cause Ira to wheel around and turn red and bring out that rhetorical two-by-four? Those were some of the most memorable and sometimes very productive exchanges. I was going through some old newspapers, trying to throw some things out, and Nick's headline for the December 12th issue, 2013, "New Falls Church Council Members Sworn In, Then One Last Duncan-Kaelin Clash." Just loved being in the headlines like that. Didn't even remember what we clashed about, honestly, as the years go by, as the mayor said, you tend to, you know. But it turns out, we were clashing over the topic that was brought up here, the pensions. And you were concerned that, you know, we wouldn't do the right thing once you were off council, and wanted to get a move on, and do it, you know, while you still served. And I remember thinking at the time, I was somewhat sympathetic to that, because I'm also sort of an old man in a hurry sometimes. And yet, I think happily for everyone, you know, the council that succeeded next did act on your advice and follow the course of action that I think has set us up with, you know, the best public employee pension, which is, you know, a real asset as we try to attract and retain talented people to work here in a little city. So, you know, thank you. Thanks also to Dick McCall, President of Citizens for a Better City. It's no secret that, you know, we've been adversaries at certain elections, but when the elections are over, we all work together for the good of the city, and I think, Dick being here tonight, we talked about your proclamation at our meeting of the CBC last week, and everybody agreed that, oh yes, we absolutely would want Dick to come and say something. So thank you very much for coming. There's no quid pro quo here. We still expect, just because we're giving you these nice words, to hear from you with your foias, and, you know, I still write every email expecting that I might just as well CC you, so we can just go straight to you, you know? You and Nick, you know, would take care of everything. And I just wanted to close by saying that this Saturday, you know, I'm doing the Relay for Life Walk. I'm going to be thinking about you and my mother, too.
Okay, well, Mr. Kaelin, you want, Mr., first, let's have Mr. Snyder go.
Well, Ira, I want to thank you for your significant contributions to our public policy debates. Your financial background has always contributed, I think, to very good outcomes. Ira and I have had a number of dynamic conversations over the years, and not so much coming from disagreements on city issues, although that would occur from time to time, but Ira's background is in banking, mine is insurance, and even though the two are financial services, anyone will tell you that the two worldviews are very, very different. So we had a lot of fun exchanging views about not only city issues, but other issues. So I just want to thank you for your service on behalf of all of our citizens.
Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I have had the occasion to sit down with Ira and, over coffee, and we talk over city issues and what's ahead of us, and, you know, as Ms. Wodisca pointed out, he does have a softer side, even though he never showed that to me. But, you know, there's plenty of praise that goes around for his accomplishments, and I just want to add a personal note to this, that sometimes from the dais, I can be kind of rough on the speaker or ask a point of questions, and if you see me doing that, or folks at home watching me do that, just think of me as perhaps just channeling a little bit of Ira. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Oliver?
Ira, I just want to say, thank you for paying attention, thank you for caring, and thank you for all the advice solicited and unsolicited. Even if I didn't take it, it was appreciated.
Ira, the floor is yours, if you'd like.
Thank you, Ira Kaelin, 429 Park Avenue. Just in case anybody cared, thank everybody for the very generous comments that have been made on my behalf. I would like to say, and I think it's been touched on here, that receiving this proclamation, to me, is an expression of the graciousness of the city at City Council, and especially important because of the issue that I am not known as a get-along-go-along guy. And in spite of that, in spite of everything else, the council and others have looked through that issue to the accomplishments that everybody has made, and given me this honor of the proclamation. And I genuinely appreciate everything that's done, and again, it speaks very well for the City Council and the city, because it's the ideas and the effort behind it, not necessarily how these are presented. And to look through how it's presented to what actually has been accomplished and come to a decision, I think, speaks very well of the city and the City Council. Now, I couldn't be up here without taking advantage of something. It would be totally out of character.
I'm sorry, your three minutes are up.
I should thank you, by the way, David, for asking for me if I would mind a proclamation. Thank you very much. One quick point on the issue, let me back up. This council is going to be facing a decision that dwarfs in its importance anything that I, council, I was unfaced, and maybe even more than any previous council, because effectively the future of the city is at stake. And that's the issue of financing the upcoming school expenditures. We have put an awful lot of weight, an awful lot of weight, on economic development, and we have used that as the silver bullet that will take us through to financial stability. I would like to suggest, and I have talked to Mr. Shields to see if the city has already done it, and my conversations indicate that the city has not yet prepared that, but I think it may be useful to the council to request the following. Do your own calculation of what expenses will look like in the end of 2030, whenever the end of the enrollment expansion is expected. I think it's a 15-year projection. See how much the operating costs and the capital costs will amount to at that point. Any number, excuse me, that the city wants to use, I'm not suggesting a methodology. Then go back and take three scenarios. First, how many apartments and condos would we have to build if we were to meet those numbers in 15 years? A second scenario would be, how much commercial space would we need if we just relied on commercial space at the end of 15 years? And a third alternative, how much mixed-use development would we need to generate that amount of money if that was the sole source of the revenue increase? Then take a look at the numbers and see what the city would look like at the end of 15 years. What would we have for the city? But have some ideas. Would it be 1,000 apartments? Would it be 500? Would it be 1,500? How many square feet of commercial space? And then get an idea of what we would look like. And let the citizens of Falls Church, at a town hall meeting, or wherever it be, have a sense of what it means, and they can judge if it's a realistic expectation, or what it is they feel they would like the city to look like in 15 years. And that's really what I want, the point that I wanted to make. I think that type of information to the citizens would help a lot in getting an idea of what people are willing to spend and expect, rather than wait until in year five or 10 to find out this is what it was going to require. We should try to get in front of it and take a look at that. And on that note, I would like to thank everybody again for their kind appreciation, everybody who spoke, and to the council. God bless you. Take care.
Thank you. And we've got the proclamation up here for you, Ira. Can you make it up the stairs? All right, come on up. Okay. will read that proclamation.
Whereas the Stonewall riots began in New York on June 28th, 1969, and are regarded as a catalyst for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender, also known as LGBT Movement for Silver Rights in the United States, and whereas June is celebrated as LGBT Pride Month nationwide, and whereas the City of Falls Church has a diverse LGBT community that includes people of all ethnicities, religions, and profession, and whereas everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, or hatred based on gendered identity or sexual orientation.
Now therefore, I, David Tarter, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of June as LGBT Pride Month in the City of Falls Church, and urge all residents to respect and honor our diverse community, and celebrate and build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance.
Mayor, if I may add a quick comment?
Of course.
I think it's actually fitting for us to recognize today as LGBT Pride Month, because it's also the one-year anniversary of the Pulse nightclub shootings in Orlando from a year ago, so I thought it would be appropriate for us to recognize the 49 victims that were killed last year, and all the other members of the LGBT community.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shields, is there anyone to receive this proclamation? Do you know? Okay, come on up. Great, well, that would be fantastic. Why don't we get someone to take your picture, then, for once? And...
And we will be forwarding that to Capitol Pride as well.
Do we have, do we add a proclamation? Is that where this is going to go? Okay. Do we need to take a vote, city attorney, on that? Is it supermajority on the five to seven, or do we need to, oh, the amending of the agenda, so that we don't need to take it further?
Yeah, you already voted unanimously to amend the agenda.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. So do I have a hard copy of that proclamation? Or do we, okay, great. Will you, Mr. Z, will you go ahead and do the honors?
Yes. This is a resolution reaffirming the City Council's commitment to reducing carbon emissions that contribute to climate change. Whereas, there is scientific consensus regarding the reality of climate change and the recognition that human activity, especially the combustion of fossil fuels that create greenhouse gases, is an important driver of climate change, and whereas climate change has been widely recognized by government, business, academic, and other community leaders as a worldwide threat with the potential to harm the economy, public safety, public health, and quality of life, and whereas addressing energy efficiency and climate change promotes a cleaner environment, a more prosperous economy by attracting jobs and positive economic development, improve comfort and health in homes and businesses, and a higher quality of life, and whereas the city has joined nearly 280 U.S. mayors representing over 59 million Americans in committing to the goals of the Paris Agreement under the United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change through the Mayor's National Climate Action Agenda, MNCAA, and by doing so, the city demonstrates that action at the local level can have a positive result nationwide and internationally. And whereas the City of Falls Church has longstanding commitment to reducing carbon emissions as evidenced by actions such as joining ICLI, the Local Governments for Sustainability, and Cities for Climate Protection in 2008, purchasing renewable fuels for its diesel fleet, purchasing wind and solar sourced electricity for its operations, establishing LED standards for public facilities, and becoming an EPA green power partner, and the first EPA green power committee in Virginia. And whereas the city has promoted the Solarize Nova effort in concert with the Northern Virginia Regional Commission, which has resulted in many home efficiency consultations and new solar installations in the city. And whereas in March of this year, the City Council adopted greenhouse gas reduction goals developed in concert with the Metropolitan Washington Council Governments, which call for an 80% reduction in carbon emissions by the year 2050 relative to a 2005 baseline. And whereas these actions to protect the climate are aligned with the city's broader actions to promote resilience and sustainability in our community, its longstanding commitment to local action to protect air quality and water quality in our streams and the Chesapeake Bay, as leadership through organizations such as the Virginia Municipal League, the Northern Virginia Regional Commission, and the Metropolitan Washington Council Governments. And whereas the city is concerned that the proposed cuts to EPA budget and critical federal environmental programs will harm the city's efforts to protect the environment.
So let me just ask the city attorney, this is something we'll be taking a vote on, then, correct? All right, so you've read the resolution. Would you like to make the resolution or move the resolution?
My pleasure. I move that we approve the resolution, TR-17-19.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? If not, yes.
Yeah. I would like to address a couple of issues, and this is only a brief catalog of the city's, all of our citizens, as well as the City Council, and all of our boards and commissions' commitment to environmental sustainability. Many of us... Many of us have served on council of governments' boards. I had the opportunity to chair the air quality committee twice. And my job took me to Beijing during one of their air alerts. So I came back and I asked the council of government staff, could we compare Washington D.C.'s air quality to major international cities? And so, the beginning of January 2016, we issued this list. And Washington's air is cleaner than Rome, Berlin, Amsterdam, Brussels, Paris, Copenhagen, London, Oslo, Madrid, Mexico City, and on and on and on. And I think the key point that I want to emphasize in this, beyond the Paris Accords, is the air quality, the improvement in air quality over the years did not happen by accident. It happened as a result of national leadership through the EPA, through the Department of Transportation, through dealing with the emissions that are basically blown by the air conditions, by the wind conditions into our region. And every bit as important as any commitment to the Paris Accord or any goals of the Paris Accord is a commitment not to undercut the effective programs that have actually achieved significant air quality and could achieve more if continued into the future. So I just wanted to add that as important as many of the other whereas provisions are, I think the last whereas provision, in my view, is if anything even more important, that we continue to do those things domestically, which will lead to, which have led to cleaner air and cleaner water, and which, unless eroded and undercut, will lead to even cleaner air and cleaner water in the future. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. I am proud that our city has joined the other cities around the world for this Paris Agreement. I think one thing that we often don't talk about enough is actually the city's role in urban planning and how that impacts and can benefit the environment. I think I shared an article with staff and both the rest of my fellow council members that if we continue to build smart, walkable, climate-smart infrastructure in buildings, meaning people don't have to use cars to get to the grocery store, where you have communities where you can truly live, work, and play, you can actually cut carbon emissions in half. So I think often we talk about planning for mixed-use development and things that are big changes for our city, but there's also a huge role in doing that for the environment, too.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, if not, will you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you. Let's move on now to the recognition of the president's Environmental Youth Award winners for the U.S. EPA agency's Mid-Atlantic Region. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Kate Walker, the city's environmental programs coordinator. If our George Mason students and staff would join me here, please. Okay, as I'm sure you realize, you have before you a remarkable group of students. These are George Mason High School students and the teacher, Peter Mecca, and Jamie Leahy. They have won a really important U.S. EPA award. This is the President's Environmental Youth Award for the EPA's Mid-Atlantic Region. The award actually involves the opportunity to be congratulated by the EPA and by the president in person. It represents a great achievement for the students, a part of a record of great achievements for them. And it has been, in part, supported by the city in that one of the things that we were able to do through the Environmental Sustainability Council, one of our council members was able to assist them in getting a grant to further this project next year. But rather than me try and tell you about the project, I've asked Peter Mecca, the teacher, to tell you about the project that these students have done.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for the invitation this evening. It's my honor to share with you the experiences from these students who have just been recognized by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. And I also want to thank Kate, her office, and Jason, Matt Hansen, yes, as the environmental engineer, city engineers who have worked very closely with us throughout this project, as well as receiving the engineering grant we just received to continue our studies here. This is, I believe, a first for George Mason High School, and we are extremely proud of the efforts of these fine young women and men, some of which are here. And I'm going to ask Mr. Leahy, my co-teacher, to share with you a little historic, a little overview of both projects. The projects we're talking about are hydroponics and aquaculture.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Leahy, a teacher at George Mason. These kids are fantastic. I can't say enough good things about them and the projects that we've done at George Mason. This started as a grant that we were awarded through the Falls Church Education Foundation that the students worked and applied for. Our original intention was to put some sort of portable greenhouse at the school, but we had to kind of change directions. And so, we got three different hydroponic units, two that are located at Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School, and one that is at the high school. I believe we've raised approximately 120 pounds of lettuce that we've served in the school cafeterias. It's all grown hydroponically, which means without soil, so it's all organic, pesticide-free. And the kids are responsible for all of the upkeep of that and monitoring the water quality, as well as growing it and harvesting. We also have a 300-gallon aquarium, giant hot tub-looking tank, in the science wing of the school, where we have about 30 tilapia that we're working to raise, to breed, and hopefully, again, to sell either at a local farmer's market or back to the schools that can be served in the cafeteria. And so, the cafeteria is purchasing these things from us, and so we can use that money to continue the project into the future.
My name is Adrian Kamel. I'm part of the hydroponics and aquaculture group at George Mason High School. I'm just, I'm here to just say for all of us that we're very, very proud to be a part of this project and part of the green schools, and we just wanted to say thank you.
Okay, well, I'll tell you, I think we'll return the favor. We are extremely proud of all of you and this great achievement. This is a really big success. And as you heard earlier, I think the city council and the whole community shares these values of wanting to improve our environment and make the city a better place. You guys are walking the walk, and you're the next generation, and we are really excited and proud of the great work you're doing. So, why don't you come forward and we can give you our congratulations, maybe get a photo for the newspaper?
As this group is sitting down, I just want to extend my personal congratulations. I was a guest at the lettuce lunch on Friday at George Mason High School, where they served and prepared a delicious lunch for their parents and people in the school division to come and see the work that they've done. And having known a lot of these kids for many years, I'm just so impressed with their ability to go out there and speak about their projects. They've made presentations, they've written grants, they've done all these amazing things while they're in high school, and I'm so pleased that they'll be able to take that on as they, some of them graduate and go on to the next step in their lives. So congratulations to all of you. You have made us very proud.
Yep. If you can grow lettuce that my kids will eat, you'll make us even prouder. So, but anyway, thank you all. Very nice work. Our next item is the Route 29, I think, presentation of the bicycle bridge or pedestrian bridge. Is that right, Mr. Shields?
Mr. Mayor, we do have some students that are here to be sworn in. I don't know if you want to do that first?
Okay, let's do that. Yeah, let's go ahead and do that right now.
We have Zachary Holmes, who's be serving as a student rep on the Environmental Sustainability Council. Selwyn Hemonway, who will be serving on VEPIS. Jessie Bedau, I said it wrong, didn't I? Who'll be on the Falls Church Education Foundation. And Kira Curtin is also on Falls Church Education Foundation. And so, they are here to take their oath of office. Raise your right hand. And you just repeat after me. State your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a member of, according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
As these students are sitting down, I also want to tell them that they have made us very proud. Three of the young ladies up here are members of our state championship lacrosse and soccer teams. They both came home with state championship trophies on Saturday.
Why don't we move on now to the metro, or the 29 pedestrian bridge? Mr. Shields, do you know who's going to be handling that?
Ms. Baxter is going to come forward, give the presentation. And if I could just take the opportunity to thank her for being here tonight. There's been a series of three public hearings at Yorktown High School on this project, and Ms. Baxter is here to present the information directly to the city council and to the Falls Church community and take any questions about it.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you for having me back again to talk about, I think, what is probably a highlight, one of the highlights of the 66 Inside the Beltway project, which will be the inclusion of a grade-separated pedestrian crossing, where the Washington Old Dominion Trail currently is at grade at 29. So, in case you all forgot, one of the elements of the 66 Inside the Beltway project is the widening. We are widening between the Dulles Connector Road to Exit 71, eastbound lanes only. And this is one out of a multiple program approach to Inside the Beltway. As you know, we're getting ready to test our tolling infrastructure that we've just installed inside the Beltway. That is expected to go online this December. We'll be testing all through the summer. And then also, we have, we are using the toll revenue to fund the multimodal program. However, this particular item tonight is being funded through the widening project. I'm going to talk to you about why. Usually, I do this slide at the end of the presentation, and please disregard the fact that our final public workshop is happening today, because it's not. It's happening tomorrow. That's my fault. But I wanted to just talk about the key milestones, so you could see where we've had two workshops with the public about the bridge and what it would look like. And we're going back out to an open house forum tomorrow night with the public to talk about, and that's at Yorktown High School. This is a design-build project, and, you know, what makes that unique when you have something that you're working with the public on how it will look? And we also are inviting a design builder to come in and do a design that, you know, within their budget. And so, we're giving them our ideas and our expectations from the public perspective. So, we always want to say in every rendering that we show that it's currently conceptual. However, in our technical requirements with the design builder, they're fully aware that gross changes beyond what the public has commented on will obviously involve more public comment and input. We're expecting to award that contract to a team. We have three teams that are currently bidding on this project, and we're actively in procurement later this year. They'll get a notice to proceed come January of next year. And the construction will take place by, between mid-2018 and be complete by 2021. The actual eastbound lane portion, the roadway piece, is expected to be contractually complete by November of 2020. We wanted to get that in place as soon as possible. So, sound walls, the bridge, everything else are kind of around the widening will happen up until 2021. So, what got us here? Why are we doing this bridge? And how did we fit this into what is an interstate widening project? There is this off-bound ramp that we're all familiar with as you head to Lee Highway, where you exit off 66. It has significant queuing on the interstate heading eastbound, both in the AM and PM peak. And we are looking to reorganize that a little bit. If you could see the addition of that red line, we are adding two off-bound ramps there to the intersection. The intersection itself, we're not changing those movements, but we are reorganizing people and giving them a little bit more place to store as you approach the intersection. And when we looked at this intersection, you can't ignore the fact that you have a very high pedestrian movement happening that is part of actually the signal phase. So you have the safety of interstate traffic coming off 66, and you have a lot of people crossing. And what does that look like? During the weekday, you have about 1,500 to about 1,800 people that cross there in the east-west movement. It doubles on the weekend, in the summertime, and even is in the 3,200 movement during the weekend. It's pretty heavily used as far as the trail is concerned. Nova Parks is, as you know, the owner and the stakeholder here with the W N O D Trail. This is their, a big focal point for them, and that's been in the comprehensive plan also in Arlington County, because this trail crossing will be wholly in Arlington County. But as you know, it's right on the fringe and the cusp of entering into the city. So, we started with a lot of constraints when we wanted to look at grade separating at this location. We have a whole slew of constraints that you can see here. I'm not going to read this to you, but this is, you know, a starting point for us when it comes to VDOT. We can actually get a waiver and go 17 feet. We don't have to be 17 and a half, and you would think that a half a feet, a half a foot doesn't really make a difference. It does. So, we're offering the ability to issue a waiver to our design builder to go to 17 feet, and that's ASHTO requirements, if they wanted to do something a little bit more streamlined. But everything else, definitely the Dominion power lines you see there, are pretty strict. I'm going to walk through how we've evolved a little bit using these design constraints. When we went out into public, and this was at our December 2012 public hearings for the widening, we showed a truss bridge, and that is the structure that you see to the left of the screen here. And that's a, you have a truss bridge here over Main Street, two truss bridges side to side. We showed that during the public, and if you look at the alignment here, we also have a, the alignment was tucked down a little bit away from the intersection to give some sight distance. So, what happened was we realized with all of our design constraints, with the Dominion power, that fitting a truss bridge in this location wasn't going to work. It has, offers some great constructability, because you can actually load it into place. I mean, you think about the bridge being there, but you also have to build the bridge and get it staged, and, you know, think about lane closures and movement of traffic. But this one, with all the constraints, particularly with the Dominion power lines, was not going to fit. So we went back. We also received a lot of comments that people felt this was too bold in the area. I don't know how, everyone here is very familiar with, as you drive down this corridor, you, if you're heading this way, right now, you're looking at the... you, if you're heading this way, right now you're looking at the self-storage area. On the other side is the O'Connor Lodge. And that is owned by a developer that is anticipating to redevelop that property. And then they have the new Crescent Apartments there, all very contemporary. We got a lot of comments about this truss not fitting that contemporary feel in the corridor. So we went to our first workshop in April with this design. This is more of a bird's eye view of the design, but I wanted to point out a couple of things, because you'll see it evolve as I go through the slides. This was a center girder bridge. And actually, if you could follow this line here, we had somewhat of a fin in the middle. That was actually part of the structure that protruded from the deck to give us the clearance that we needed to meet the design constraints. Not extremely desirable, because people don't want to get on a bridge and then have something, you know, in the middle splitting, you know, the pedestrian traffic. But we've, working with those design constraints and the information that we had at the time, we felt that this was something that we could fit. We also skinnied up the alignment. We pushed the alignment a little bit more to the north. One reason was, one of the constraints identified by the Arlington County Fire Marshal is that in order to fight fires and access all around the Crescent, they have an easement here. We were really too close to that building to provide fire access. So we, we were able to push that up a little closer, which actually resulted in, you know, this initial approach of having this fin here. We got a lot of comments about, A, just not liking us, but also, you know, the abrupt fence. What could it look like? Could it be a little bit more streamlined? We also didn't have any lighting at that workshop. We went back in May, and we presented this design. You could see where we incorporated light poles. We smoothed out the curvature. We had people provide comments on what the fence and railing. This isn't chain-linked fence, for example. This is what we call like a clear-view fence that is very, you know, it's not very opaque when you look at it from different angles. And I'll walk you through some of the aesthetics here in a moment that everyone got to weigh in on. I will say after this workshop, a lot of, don't like those light poles. And I don't blame folks, because we had to pick out of our category of light poles that Dominion would actually maintain for VDOT. We have a very small selection of what they will maintain for us. So with a nice contemporary bridge like this, these acorn lighting, you know, it just didn't really match architecturally. So what happened after that meeting is, or actually between the meetings when we got those comments, Nova Parks wrote VDOT a letter and offered to say, if you introduce alternative, more contemporary lighting, we'd be happy to maintain that lighting. So that's really great, and I'll show you what that's going to look like. When we went out to the meetings, and this is, I'm going to walk you through what I'm going to show tomorrow night at our open house, we gave the public an opportunity to look at the, what the abutments on either side, when the approaches could actually come up to the bridge structure, what those abutments could look like. We gave people the opportunity to comment on the pier shapes, the bridge color, the fence railing, and what the railing and the fence look like. We have to have a fence over the actual 29, the higher fence, and then the actual railing as you go down the bridge. And then also, the lighting was another opportunity for public comment. So tomorrow, this is what we're going to show. Tonight I picked a rendering that we put on like a real picture, so you could take a snapshot. But you could see, we have no light poles anymore. I'm going to show you what those lights look like. I'm going to talk about how these piers changed a little bit. This is one out of three piers that we're going to show tomorrow that still are that V shape. Everyone's looking for the V shape that matches the V shape of the bridge fencing. And also, we have the V shape incorporated into the railing as well. The bridge color is a light gray, and I'll walk you through some of the other comments here. This is a different structure. We, with the clearance waiver that we were able to get, we were able to actually put in a five-girder system and get rid of that center fin. A lot of comments about that fin, again, about being in the middle. And as you come up a bridge, if you're on a bike and you're like, whoa, okay, this is right in the middle of the travel lane. We came up with a five-girder option here that the design builder, the design builder, all they get is, this is your design envelope, you need to fit something here. So we're giving a concept of what, we need to find one thing that would fit and then show them that. This is one of the piers. I'll show you a couple other piers. This is another pier type that came out of some comments, where we actually took the abutment aesthetics. A lot of people, we presented three types of aesthetics initially. We had the stacked stone. We had a raked look, and then we had this board form. And the public really liked the board form with the contemporary look. And we are bringing that to this pier in this type of example. We curved the fence even more to show a taper. There is one like little jointed area than where it gets flat. But that's purely how it's installed for the fencing. And then you could see here where we have some proposed lighting that we can actually slip into the V posts. So we can actually have lighting as you approach the center span and then some rail lighting that I'll show you here in a moment. So here are three different types of V options that we're showing. This is probably most similar to what we've shown the public before. This is, this is the five-girder option with the solid V pier. And as you could see, as it, the abutments go down to the actual final MSE wall abutment where the board form is, it almost looks like the V is being buried into the ground, if you will. The V pier with the I-beam, there's actually an I-beam embedded up here where this pier sits on. And then our design lead on this, he calls this the Virginia Tech pier. And I was like, okay, he thinks this is the VT pier. But this is a V pier integrated with a beam as well that we're showing. Again, conceptual only. The design builder can come up with something slightly different. And, you know, we will, of course, be communicating that to the public with some options. This is a nighttime photo of, with the new lighting package here, where you can see the rail lighting, lighting up the deck of the bridge. In order to make sure that the lighting is adequate, they will do a study to make sure that they get the right lumens in there. But this is an example of, as you go across the bridge, you now don't have the poles anymore, and you have a lighted feature as you go across the bridge. This is really important, because I think this is really what's going to give it the park setting around the base of the bridge. And I was driving here tonight, coming down Main Street. You know, you have that little archway and essentially a park where the WNOD is set back. We are doing, definitely for VDOT, some pretty extensive landscaping through this area. And just to orient everyone right now, this property right here, down in front of the Crescent, is owned by Arlington County. That was the original Fairfax Drive that, you know, gets picked back up on the other side of 66 that was truncated here when we constructed the interstate. They own this property. There's a pretty important park to the Crescent there that we're, we are mitigating by moving some park features that are currently in this location over here and planting some trees and some visual aesthetics. This area right here, and I'm actually including these cars, by the way, and I'm going to talk about that in a second, is owned by Nova Parks. Couple features about this property here, besides the trail that's currently there. This little area right here, in between the trail and the self-storage, is an historic coal trestle area that's on Arlington County's local landmarks. It's a locally recognized historic landmark. But it's also a contributing landmark to the National Register WNOD Trail. We are looking to provide some access to that. You can see down here, Arlington County actually has a plan to provide some access and some interpretive signage for the coal trestle. I would say the most valuable resource of that is still over here. I think when they develop the self-storage, they cut into that trestle area. So we're working with them to lay out a plan that is in concert with what they've proposed. On the other side, these cars right here that is associated with, I think, the Car USA, they are parked on the right-of-way of Nova Parks, but they are there by a lease agreement between the original Snyder Hardware that was there that is, that lives with the land transfer. So that lease agreement remains, and we can't really encroach in that area there. Again, there's some benches that we're moving around. We're planting a lot of vegetation through there. And this is just a compilation of the type of trees and shrubbery that we're going to do. We're also proposing to maybe introduce, with graffiti treatment, of course, introduce some concrete benching and some areas of resting along the base of that. Because this is more underneath this bridge, you can see the concrete underneath here. And that's more of the plaza or park area underneath the bridge. I'm ending this just with some next steps. Like I said, tomorrow night, please ignore the date, tomorrow night, and please ignore the year. Otherwise, we would really, I'd really be back to the future. But we are presenting an open house forum. I've given a presentation at all the other workshops tomorrow night. I know there's some voting going on at the, at the high school tomorrow night as well. But we're going to do more of an open house forum with folks to start talking about some of the newer features to the bridge as this evolves. We also are issuing an addendum to our procurement that includes a lot of these features and options for the design builder to consider. Part of that will be a package of all the public comments that we've received, so the design builder can take a look at that as well. And with that, I'll take any of your questions. Yes, that's a good point. Something that wasn't in our original environmental assessment that came somewhat later on down the road and has its own environmental document is some improved access to West Falls Church Metro. And really want to thank the city to, they invited VDOT to be part of a planning session here in the city for all the redevelopment that's going to happen with the high school and middle school. But let me describe what that is. And I always have like a graphic with me, and tonight I don't. But as you come 66 eastbound, if you want to access the metro currently, you have to exit to the right. You have to make your left at Haycock after you've weaved across Seven. That is typically queued back, you know, past 66 to begin with, when it's pretty heavy. And then make obviously a left as you go to the metro. So you're going two lefts, which is never the desired movement, especially if you want to be somewhere. I'll give you, an interesting fact is that there's more traffic heading to metro in the evening peak hour parking at metro. So probably because there's no good access in the morning anyway. And probably, and one of the reasons I was talking to Amada back when 66 was constructed, there was no desire to give direct access to West Falls Church Metro, because everyone that was on it during the peak were HOV, because that's the restriction, right? It's part of the initial decision on that. So what we're doing, oh, thank you for that. What we're doing is we are, there we go. If you could follow along, here's the ramp as you head down to Seven, and Haycock is here. Thank you. Here's the ramp here. And then if you actually want to make a left movement and head towards the Tysons area, you can make a left at the light here. And VDOT has done some somewhat recent improvements to help, because we did have some queuing up through this ramp to provide better mobility. We are proposing to include in our contract for the widening, this separate project that will give a ramp-to-ramp connection. So we'll be extending and including an additional off-ramp up 66 to provide a decision lane and a lane to exit to the right. And as you come here, and this, we call this a gore area, we'll be modifying this, and we'll be constructing a new ramp that will tie into the ramp as you come around. So you can essentially get off 66 eastbound and tie into this existing ramp and head right to the metro without even having to be in Falls Church, you know, at that light putting. You know, and I think one of the other things that we heard definitely during the planning session is, as you begin to redevelop this area, all the pedestrian movements and the vision in the future, if you can eliminate some of that movement at that light, it will be a really welcome improvement. So again, we will, we will do this, and we'll provide that direct access to West Falls Church Metro. And the school is back here for the first time ever since 66 has been open. Now I'll take any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you very much for the very thorough presentation. I guess I'd start and see if any of my colleagues have any questions or comments on what we've seen just now. Let me start with Mr. Zee on the end.
Yes, Ms. Baxter, thank you so much for shepherding this project. And it looks like you're very close to getting it through. I know that some of us have not been all that cooperative with all the questions that we've asked. So my question, and it's not intended to slow down the process. In fact, if anything, I would like to see it go a little bit faster. But the, it seems to me that the, the concrete probably is some object of controversy. And in many ways, it recalls the kind of perhaps construction that became very popular in the late 50s and 60s as Eisenhower builds interstates. And we had this Jetson kind of perspective on what that looked like. I think the product here is, is, is very nice. I applaud the work that you did to get rid of those light poles. It was the first thing I saw. I couldn't get off that until you said they're gone. So, and I presume these things are LED lights as well.
That's correct. Very maintainable.
Of course they are. So the, my, my question really is, how much variability, when you provide the specifications to the design bill contractor with regard to how, what the final outcome would look like? As I say, is it completely up to them to economize on concrete or economize on formwork? Do you have a buy-in into, say, into, well, this looks better than that? And we heard from comments that that was preferred?
You know, the short answer is, everyone can expect to have some more public involvement once we get our design builder under contract. You know, they're going to come in, they could value engineer something. They could find a way that is cheaper for them to construct that could be slightly different alignment. It could be a slightly different type of construction. Maybe their abutment lengths are different. They have all the flexibility to do that with public input. But they somewhat have, not only do they have their constraints envelope, but they certainly have the aesthetic kind of direction based on some of these preliminary workshops that we're doing. So they do have the flexibility, and we want them to, because we want to manage costs. The bridge that you're looking at tonight estimated to be somewhere in the $7 million to $8 million range for this bridge as proposed. So this is, not only is it a great thing to include in a project like this, but, you know, it's also something where, if it really went a lot north in that, I think it would raise some eyebrows of a lot of people to say, isn't this an interstate project? And how important is it to get this bridge here? So the design builder is sensitive to that, and they're also sensitive to their costs. So it'll be very interesting to see what they propose once we go through the technical proposal process with them.
Well, we are a city that joins a larger county that has a very fine-tuned sense of aesthetics. And so I'm just going to conclude by saying that I'm happy to rely on your well-tuned sense of aesthetics to make this a project that, first of all, you can be proud of, but then the citizens in the city and in the county would also be happy to say that this is something that we really desire and we want in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, one thing, one point that made me think I'd be remiss not to mention is just the site plan itself. When we walked the site and city staff attended that site walk, you know, that we recognized there's also a plan for the ultimate sidewalk widths and the buffer and the locations. And we are, there's East Falls Church area plan, obviously, that's there, and then the tie-in to the city plan. So we are constructing that in line with the future plans to have those better sidewalks. Because certainly on the west side of 29 there, the sidewalks are a little bleak, a little thin. And we have an opportunity to have an improvement there as well.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Conley, did you have some question?
Thank you very much, Ms. Baxter. I have a question about the proposed noise wall. At the, was it late May meeting or the early May meeting? There were some drawings of what the noise wall might look like between 66 and the Crescent.
Yes.
Has that been refined any further?
It has not, and that's a good point. We have a written comment even from the county that nobody likes the noise wall from an aesthetic perspective. There's also some concern that it blocks some future plans of pedestrian connection to the metro that Arlington's proposing. Here's the thing with the noise walls, and you probably heard me talk about this a little bit during the widening, is there's a whole public process that goes with noise walls that's mandated through our agreement with Federal Highway. VDOT has a noise policy that's in compliance with their noise guidelines. So the public that gets benefited from that noise wall gets to say whether or not they want the noise wall. There will be a final noise design, and then we will ballot those affected receptors at that time. So that has not been decided upon. There's opportunity also to incorporate that somewhat in the structure of the bridge as well. as well. The design builder will have to figure that all out themselves, but it's still not a done deal with the noise wall, because we still have to go through the final noise design to get there. But that is, I would say, probably a pretty negative comment is about the appearance and just the, the actual tunnel, if you will, between the noise wall and the bridge and just pedestrian safety through there. If the wall is constructed and we do have that type of area, you know, we are looking to increase lighting acrid as part of this project to make sure that we have, you know, enough lighted features there to provide safe passage.
So the people that would get to vote on whether they want a noise wall or not, is it just the residents of the Crescent, or is it the residents of the neighborhood there behind the Econo Lodge?
I'd have to look exactly at our noise report to see how far our receptors go off. We go off about 500 feet from the interstate, but it's the Crescent, they're part of it. And then I believe some of those residents that you've described are kind of scooped into that voting. And the Econo Lodge as well is a receptor as far as the activity there as well.
My concern is that the residents of the Crescent are apartment renters who don't really have a long-term interest in that area in the way that perhaps the owners of the Crescent would.
Right.
Or the owners of-
The owners get a vote-
The owners get a vote as well.
And it's a weighted vote based on what you just described. So somebody that has a six-month lease isn't going to decide whether a wall is going to stay there for forever, however long the wall is there.
Okay, thank you. And will you keep us posted on how that goes?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
And then my other question is just about the thing that I always ask about, is there a chance when we, when the aesthetics of the bridge are more firmly decided, could it say welcome to Falls Church on it somehow?
You know, we have gotten some comments. The short answer is, there has been some comments from the jurisdiction that, you know, putting any type of lettering on the bridge is not something they desire. It's one of those things where, you know, where is that line of who can say, like, what it should say? So I don't think we're there yet. I think that's a conversation that needs to continue and about, you know, where it could say that and how. We have gotten some comments too about introducing public art into this bridge, but it's a balancing act. You know, you have this bridge that everyone wants to be streamlined and contemporary with the setting of that area, but then you start putting, you know, so many Christmas ornaments on the Christmas tree, and then it becomes like, wow, look at this bridge that, you know, we just built here with all this stuff on it. So we are working to see how that will shake out in the end with Arlington, but they know the desires of the county. You're part of the stakeholder working group, and I think that conversation will get to a certain point in the future.
Thank you.
Any comments down this side? Mr. Snyder, then Ms. Oliver.
So Amanda, I think you and I have attended, what, dozens of meetings on I-66 in the last couple of years.
Probably.
So I want to thank you for moving forward on the bridge. I think it's terribly important, and I think the design of the bridge has improved with each step, so thank you very much for that. And on the issue of sound walls, part of the project is to replace the sound walls that are literally falling down west of where that bridge would go. I know we've had a number of citizens who have expressed concern about those sound walls over on that side. So that's part of the project, as I understand it. Is that right?
That is correct. Those sound walls were actually a project before this project where VDOT was going to come in with a $4 million maintenance project and just take down those walls, you know, not with a noise study, and just replace the height and kind and just put something that aesthetically looked better and was something that we can maintain. The walls, clearly, we cannot maintain now because we don't even have the materials, those types of panels. Everything's coming down, and we are going to construct the noise walls. And one thing, when we showed the noise walls at the public meeting, we had them as stacked stone, because a commitment that we made was, we built those walls as part of the spot two improvement as you head out to the Dulles Toll Road on the westbound lane, that's the stacked stone look that you see on those walls, and we wanted to maintain that same look so you don't have the hodgepodge-looking walls as you go down the corridor. So that's what we'll be replacing those walls. The difference with those replacement walls is unlike what I just described with balloting the public, those individuals will not be balloted, because we are replacing something that was previously approved as part of the noise mitigation commitment as part of 66 when it was constructed before. So many people that we've talked to are just fine with that, because they want the wall anyway, but I just wanted to make that distinction.
So I just wanted to distinguish the earlier discussion on sound walls with the fact that those green metal things which are literally falling down are going to be replaced-
Out of there.
They're gone.
They're gone.
That's great, thanks.
And one other important point, we're taking all the metal walls that are currently on all the bridge overpasses, and we're replacing those with lightweight walls. When we did the spot two improvement, we had these nice new sound walls, and then we have like these remaining lightweight metal walls sitting on the bridge, because they showed effective, but we are taking everything down and replacing it with new lightweight walls on all the bridge structures as well to give some continuity to the corridor.
Just one other point, we do look at the bridge primarily for its role on the bike path in maintaining the safety of pedestrians and bicyclists, but also it's an entrance to the city as well as an entrance to Arlington County. So we'll want to work with you to see what sort of gateway thing effect we can make. But again, thank you for hundreds of hours of work on this project.
Sure.
Oliver.
First, I just want to say, as one of the 15 to 1800 people that go through there every day, I go through there twice, this can't happen fast enough for me. But one of the, one request I just wanted to make as the project advances and you are going to have additional public hearings, I think it would be really helpful if you or the design build person can put signs actually along the trail. We've actually had very good luck with the sort of Realtor-type signs, just the little ones that you put up, kind of telling people, because when you're walking or biking along there, you're going to see that. And those 15 to 1800 people probably have opinions, and so I just think it would be helpful if we can do that type of signage as the project moves forward. Thank you.
Okay, anything else down that end of the table? If not, thank you very much. We really appreciate your efforts and look forward to hearing more back from you.
Billy, thanks for having me.
Thank you. Okay, why don't we move on to receipt of public comments? Madam Clerk, do you want to start with the written comments?
Yes, sir. Regarding the Railroad Avenue Cottage Housing Project, Julie Harrison of 1220 Ellison Street forwarded her concerns about parking plans for the project. Regarding the Founder's Row Project, Elizabeth Patera of 912 Park Avenue asked that the project be voted down if it had 600 apartments. Steve Mostow of 204 Grove Avenue regrets his initial support of the project and expressed concern about the direction of the project and the actions of the developers. Paul Whackerbarth asked council to drop consideration of the project because he thinks it is weaker than it was when it was approved. Regarding the Broad and Washington Project, the following wrote to oppose the project as presented before the, they wrote this before the last council work session. Mary Chavez, 215 Lawton Street, Diane and Tom Duggan, 102 Lawton Street, Ambassador Eric Schultz and Claudia Schultz, 107 Lawton Street, Leslie Rye and John Coleman, 214 Lawton Street, Linda and Moktark Kamel, 216 Lawton Street, Lisa Varuxis, 301 Grove Avenue, Elizabeth and Kirk Emge, 510 East Broad Street, John Lanewett, 510 East Broad Street, and Gail Lanewett, 427 East Columbia Street, as well as Sandy Tarpinian of 105 Great Falls Street. Mary Chavez, Tom Duggan, and Leslie Rye also wrote following the work session with their concerns about the fourth submission from the developer. And the Ambassador Schultz and Mrs. Schultz wrote separately to express their concern about the project and oppose the rezoning of the T1 zoning lot and to advise that they had retained legal representation on the matter. John Mislay of 602 Laura Drive wrote in support of the project. He said he was concerned about the impact of the residential component but thought there would be an overall benefit to the city. Greg Aldana of 609 Noelwood Avenue wrote in support of locating Creative Cauldron in the project. On other items, the Environmental Sustainability Council and the Tree Commission wrote together to recommend that the campus project design provide a significant amount of campus-wide open space and tree canopy and a minimum of LEED gold certification for the buildings. And we had two lovely letters from TJ Elementary School. Four fifth graders wrote in support of bike share, and three wrote in support of additional turf fields.
Okay, thank you very much. We have some speakers. If you wish to speak tonight, you're welcome to do so. We would just ask that you fill out one of these red slips, they're available in the lobby, and hand them to the clerk. When I call your name, if you could come forward and state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes, so that we can get through all of our different speakers. You do not have to speak right now. If you'd like to wait until your item is called, you're welcome to do that as well. Let me call our first speaker. If you have not filled out a speaker's slip, please do so now. Our first speaker is Leah Nolan with Relay for Life. Is she here? Hi, welcome. Thanks for sticking around with us.
Hi, my name is Leah Nolan. I work on behalf of the American Cancer Society and Relay for Life of the Beltway. I was asked by Mr. Duncan, thank you so much for having me, to say a few words as this is the week leading up to our event. Our event is going to be this Saturday, June 17, at George Mason High School, with opening ceremonies kicking off at 12:00 PM. It's a wonderful community event. We have three ceremonies throughout the night. It's a great chance to celebrate and remember those that we may have lost to cancer and honor those who are currently undergoing cancer treatments. It's a very cathartic afternoon together. It's wonderful to see the community come out. We have almost about 300 participants registered and always looking to add new faces. I'm new to the community as well, so I'm looking to meet as many people as I can. But I just wanted to take a minute and encourage you guys all to register. I'll leave some information on the back table, if that's okay. But yeah, so our event is from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM. You can come for a part of the day, the entire time. We'll walk around the track together and work to celebrate lives, save lives, and lead the fight for a world without cancer. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I've gone the past couple of years, it's been a great event, look forward to coming on this coming Saturday, so thank you. Our next speaker is Rodney Langford. Welcome.
My name is Rodney Langford. I live at 1015 Madison Lane in Falls Church. I'm here to address a traffic, a very serious traffic concern I have. If I'm leaving Madison Lane onto West Street, the house on that corner, 1,000 Madison Lane, the vegetation and tree growth now is growing on into West Street. I have hit, been hit a couple of times, I know my wife has, and my daughter has also been hit a couple of times, and I'm very concerned about the kids that live on that street riding their bicycles up and down the street and going to Thomas Jefferson School. I'm concerned about their safety as well. I came to the city council on May 12 to address my concerns about it, nothing has been done. I came around May 30 to address my concerns, nothing has been done. And I came, I came again today on May 30, and they suggested I take pictures and send it to them. Why I had to take the pictures and forward to them, I don't know. So it's time that I bring my concerns to you all for the safety of our children on the street and people leaving the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shields, do you have anything to add or to say?
I will certainly look into it, and I'll get back with Mr. Langford.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
We'll get back to you tomorrow.
And I'm really concerned about our children.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Erin Thebert. Did I get your name right? Okay, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me. I'm Erin Thebert of 721 Sea Cliff Road in McLean, and I am here in support of the Washington and Broad Project, particularly with regard to the Creative Cauldron. We've been participants in the Cauldron for several years. It has practically changed our lives, because our son has found a great outlet for his theatrical personality, and we enjoy coming into the city and enjoying all of its arts programs that it has to offer. When we come in, we usually don't go into McLean to eat dinner, we come into Falls Church, we shop at your stores, and we eat dinner in your restaurants, and then we go to plays at the Cauldron and in other areas here in the city. So we are fully in support of the project. We can't wait to see what it's going to turn into, and we just wanted to express our support tonight, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Laura Hall.
Welcome. Thank you. I'm Laura Hall, reside at 2923 Johnson Road, Falls Church, although most of you know I spend most of my time at 410 South Maple Avenue. Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members, there's no place like home. The phrase has been resounding in my ears for the past few weeks, and it's not just because we're in the middle of a fabulous production of The Wizard of Oz at Creative Cauldron. It's also because we're so thrilled at the potential of securing a permanent new artistic home in the Broad and Washington Development. And not to keep abusing the Oz metaphors, but I've also been thinking about the sands in the hourglass that the witch turns over in Oz, and knowing that our lease is up in June of 2019 with absolutely no guarantee of an artistic home, and knowing all the impact that we've been able to have, the wonderful work of our artists, we were thrilled when Rick Hausler and Todd Hitt told us enthusiastically that they wanted to include a home for Creative Cauldron in their development. It was like a dream come true. A real-intentioned black box theater will be built for us there, and there will be space for a shop and for a rehearsal space, classroom space, allowing us to grow our programs and our reach in the community. We've accomplished so much in the past eight years, thanks to your support, Helen Hayes' recommendations and awards, and critical recognition of the quality of our work. Patrons now come from all around the metropolitan area to see our productions, frequenting restaurants and shops on their visits, and young people here in the city and the northern Virginia area get exposed to the transformational power of learning and growing in the arts. You've heard those testimonials, and there'll be other letters that you'll receive tonight about the impact. There are so many stories that I can tell you from the last eight years of our venture. But now we have new champions, people who understand and believe in our work and the positive impact that we can have on a thriving arts and entertainment district that is what we hope will become a shining example for the region. We hope that you can support this new development, and we promise that our new artistic home will be a welcoming home for the arts and something that the city of Falls Church can be very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Kelly Glazer, followed by Diane Dugan. I'm sorry, I didn't, yep, was that later or now? Okay. James Morrison.
Good evening, Mayor Tarter, members of the council. I'm James Morrison. I'm from 1012 Steeple's Court. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Steeple's Court Homeowners Association, just off the northwest side of the proposed Mason Row, Founder's Row Project. In the past couple of weeks, I've had the opportunity to speak with several members of the council, in person or on the phone, and thank you very much, those of you who took my calls and spoke with me. I know that a lot of work has gone into the project by the developers, also by the council and by the community. Over time, the project has improved. What started out as a plan for an apartment block with a Walgreens store, as the council may recall, became a unique space with a hotel, a movie theater, an arts and entertainment dimension, and about a third of its space devoted to upscale retail. The community gradually reached a favorable consensus on the project. I spoke with Spectrum's developers, Peter Batten and Dick Buskel, about it on quite a number of occasions, and I became a part of that favorable consensus. I spoke here at the council in favor of the project. So I'm not a NIMBY. In fact, you might say I'm a YIMBY, yes, in my backyard for a well-designed project. In January, I attended a community open house hosted by Spectrum and Mill Creek, the developers. It was a good discussion. At one point, Dick Buskel stood up and said, and I quote, "We will not begin construction of this project unless we have both the hotel and the theater." I took that commitment to heart, so did others. But now I think we're starting to see some appealing features of this project slip away, starting with the hotel, and with it, hotel guests who could help support the project's restaurants and retail. Figures I have seen show the proposed residential units growing from 322 to 394, or 82% of the project's space, while the portion of the property dedicated- of the project's space, while the portion of the property dedicated to retail would shrink from about 35 percent to 17 percent. The loss of 80,000 square feet of retail space apparently means the city will get $300,000 a year less than expected in annual revenue from the project. And there's still no deal for the theater. Perhaps most alarmingly, we learned that the developers do not actually have development rights on the land, or all of it. 7-Eleven on the site hasn't agreed to leave, so all the maps we've been working with are called into question. A skirmish with the 7-Eleven leaseholders even led the project developers to install an ill-advised wall of flowerpots across its parking lot. That in turn led to attention to the stalled project by the news media, which in turn led to news accounts about another apparently stalled project by the developers in the Callmore area of Bailey's Crossroads. When last the community tuned in, we were discussing the size and color of an exterior stripe on the hotel. Now we're talking about what to do with no hotel and lots more apartments. Developers say the newly designated apartments will be age-restricted to people over 55 with no residents under 19, and that's supposed to reduce the impact on the Falls Church City Schools. But will it? I regret to say, looking back on it, and I do regret it actually, because I consider Peter and Dick very nice guys that I like, but many of the developers' promises have proven to be aspirational ideas rather than genuine commitments. Agreeing to fewer apartments, it turns out, was aspirational. Building the hotel was aspirational. Having clear rights to develop all the land was aspirational. The theater is beginning to look aspirational, and the age-restricted apartments already look aspirational. What if in two years' time, the developers come back and say, "We can't make the over-55 model work. We need to open it up to more people of all ages. Oh, and without the hotel, we can't make a lot of the retail work either." What then? Where will all these unsuccessful aspirations have led us? With respect to the retail, I'm not sure that bringing in Mill Creek Residential Trust to the picture has helped. As its name implies and as its website makes clear, virtually its entire focus is on residential housing. So, it seems to me that now or pretty soon, we will be back to where we began several years ago, when this project was initially proposed, something like an apartment block with a Walgreens. A Walgreens, by the way, would should be diagonally across the street from a Rite Aid. So, here is the question. If this project came before you now as a new project with a hoped-for 17 percent retail and about 400 new apartments, would you green-light it? It strikes me as reminiscent of Pearson Square, to be frank. I repeat that I don't oppose development on this site. It is not delivering much value to the community the way it is, but I believe we need to rethink how we develop it. I think we need to start afresh distinguishing concrete commitments from aspirations. So, on behalf of the Steeple's Court Homeowners Association, I would request that the council take this project back to a first reading.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to our next speaker, and if you could keep your comments to three minutes, we'd certainly appreciate it. Our next speaker is Rohini Winters. Followed by Mr. Massey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'd like to ask that you not forward the special exception amendment for the Mason Row Founder's Row project out for boards and commissions, as the staff might recommend next week at your work session, for the reasons Mr. Morrison stated. I don't think I can say it any better. I have had my concerns all along with this project and developer. I'm very concerned about the commercial or lack thereof that we've all been saying our city depends on, our future school improvements, our sustainability of the school operations costs, our city operations are all at risk. So, I would prefer if you would tell Mill Creek and Spectrum developer, like you did tell other proposers in the past, that this one doesn't meet the standard for Falls Church special exceptions. Thank you, and move on. We've spent too much time already. The residents should not, and the citizens of the city, nor should your staff or yourselves, spend time over the summer when you have other very dire and important projects to worry about and consider. Shouldn't spend any more time on this aspirational project. I think we should look at the WNOD Trail again, and the West End Park, and the East Falls, the improvement to 66, and what does that really do for the possibilities of the city of Falls Church, and rethink the West End. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Massey. Followed by Ms. Camel. Did I get that right, hopefully?
Hi.
Hi.
You all know that I'm not a big fancy lawyer or a real estate developer or anything like that, and I'm even a little bit sick to make it even more interesting. But the essence of the way I look at this thing is when they, in effect, lost, if they ever really had it, that second anchor, this thing went up in smoke. It is actually just a bunch of smoke and mirrors at this point. A big block of apartments with a few restaurants is nothing like what we were talking about. This whole community, God knows my family, put tons of work into this to help these developers come up with a really reasonable proposal that this community would accept. And instead of pulling that out, and by the way, as I'm sure Mr. Dan remembers, Mr. Steve remembers, in the end, I was in favor of this thing, right? I came up and said, "All right, we've got to have something. We've all worked hard. We've all tried hard. We've got something now." At this point, we've got nothing. We've got absolutely nothing but a couple bags of air. And I don't mean to be talking nasty, but these folks are really skilled in the art of PR. They're really skilled at having us dream dreams and then buying into those dreams, and what have they delivered? There has been almost no major promise that they have said they're going to try to create that has actually come to the fore, that's actually come off. So, what I'm looking at right now is, well, okay, if they can manage to pull off what is already existing, that is in agreement with two anchors, okay. That's what I agree to. That's what a lot of members of this community got behind in the end and said, "All right." But to approve this change of the special exception and make it a single anchor, I think it just, it kills it, because business draws business. One of the lessons I learned in business as a boy, and my family was in business, and one of the most important things any retail businessman is his location. It's more important than anything else practically. And I can remember when my grandfathers put stores in in McLean, and I can remember my father trying to put a store into Falls Church, right? It's all about the location. It's all about the draw and what's around you for a business. If we lose, or since we, in effect, lost the second anchor, the whole thing is just useless. And again, thank you very much, and I know you all have worked very, very, very hard on this. We all have. As far as I'm concerned, it's in the garbage. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Linda Camel, Camel, I'm sorry. Hi, how are you?
Hello.
Okay, my apologies.
Yeah, Linda Camel, 216 Lawton Street. And I'm here to talk about the inside project at Broad Street in Washington. I live on Lawton Street, and one of the things that we've asked the developers to do, which I don't think has been done yet, is to give us a public green space. And my idea, and others' peoples' as well, is to put the green space between the Schultz's home, there's a passageway there, and then the building itself. So, the passageway could be something attractive, maybe very green possibly. I don't know if you can put trees there, because there's a parking lot underneath, but definitely lots of green area and a nice passageway, maybe with an architecture, maybe an arch or something that would make it look attractive. So, the transition between this big, huge building and then the smaller home would be more feasible. And also because they're taking down about, I think, maybe 60 trees. So, we're going to lose a lot of trees.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Marty Mizerv, followed by Kay Meyer. Welcome.
Can't say I really miss being up there. Good evening, Mayor Tarter, members of city council. My name is Marty Mizerv, and I live at 708 Berry Street. I'm here to speak to the Broad and Washington project. Since I first became active in the city in the 1980s, this has been the corner the city has wanted to develop. We finally have a proposal, one that respects the city's desire for a Class A office building, and one that takes seriously the arts and entertainment designation for the area. With restaurants and creative cauldron as the destination attractions in the project, Broad and Washington will draw visitors to the city and create a special place where people want to be. The connections to the State Theater and to the other local shops that line Broad and Washington will activate the crossroads in the way the city has always envisioned. Diane McKeever, our late and, I say, great city manager, who I still miss, impressed upon us that the market, not our desires, would be the primary driver of any development. We have the ability to massage the project, to address neighbors' concerns, to meet affordable housing goals, and to offset challenges to the schools and recreation programs, among other things. But the market tells us what the big picture will be. The applicant is confident that the market will support the office building and has pledged to provide curated retail that will help activate the project. I suspect that nothing on a large scale nowadays would be proposed absent a residential component. But I believe the additional residential development that we've seen along Broad Street already contributes to the liveliness of the area with more pedestrian traffic than I have previously seen. We are on our way to having a downtown, and we need to manage it well. Creative Cauldron has had a positive experience working with the applicant team. I have worked with many developers in the past and have been stung by many. So, it is refreshing to work with a professional team with a track record of successes and sustained community involvement, which I feel is a very important piece of this. I am encouraged by the recent revisions to the plan and responsiveness to council and neighbor concerns, and hope you can see this project through to a first reading soon. Creative Cauldron will be very grateful to the city and to the developer for providing us with a permanent home. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was good.
Our next speaker is Kay Meyer. And before you get up, I just wanted to note that Laura Gogel had put in a speaker's slip but was unable to stay, and she left a note that she shares the sentiment expressed by Rohini Winters and Mr. Massey. So, hopefully she'll be able to stick around next time. But welcome to you. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you very much. I'm speaking on behalf of Leslie Rye, who could not be here tonight. My name is Kay Meyer. I live at 205 East Columbia Street, and thank you for this opportunity to speak on the Broad and Washington project. So, I'm reading from Leslie's note. "Thank you all for the time you spend trying to create the best for the future of the Falls Church community. I've spent many years working on many projects in Falls Church. My comments tonight refer to the Broad and Washington project on the former Robertson property. This is a keystone intersection in the city. It is a great opportunity for someplace special with a capital S. Please spend the time to make it work for our entire community, including residential and commercial neighbors, and as a potential placemaking location for the city's future. We should be able to look back, all of us, in five, 10-plus years, and say that this was and remains a great project for all. To accomplish this requires creativity, adequate time for review of many details, and respectful analysis and assessment of input and concerns from various city communities, including residential neighbors, businesses, and city staff. Voting before these various contributions are thoroughly and completely evaluated is a rush job and not a benefit for the long-term objectives." And this is the end of Leslie's comments, and I would just add, after having heard the very detailed and wonderful presentation by the woman who talked about the ramp, the pedestrian ramp, of how detailed that project is, down to the trees, down to everything, and it's not seemed to have been quite that way with this Broad Street. It seems to be so much still in flux, and so I just admire the intentionality and the detail of that project, and hope that that will be done with this as well. The other thing I would just add a comment on is that this corner, this Broad and Washington corner, is the corner that affects most neighbors. There are not neighbors on the other three quadrants. This is a corner that affects a great deal of neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Kathy Kleiman.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kathy Kleiman. I live at 203 Grove Avenue. And a number of us were planning to be here a few weeks ago when Mill Creek and Spectrum Development were on the agenda to give us an update on the special exception amendment, just an overview, not a formal presentation. But we heard from the city that they weren't coming, so we didn't come. And what we did was really study the materials that Mill Creek has presented. Thank you for putting them on the city website. Thank you for making them available. And Gary Fuller has also put them at the library, so we've seen the big plans. And I share with my neighbors a great concern over the careful compromise that we all drafted a year and a half ago and over two years before that. Spectrum and Mill Creek offered an enormous amount of commercial space, 180,000 square feet, as part of the Mason Row project. And there were two anchors that you so wisely negotiated for us. And so, we would have the hotel, we would have the movie theater. The project offered a whopping 32.3 percent commercial and would have had an enormous return. The hotel, as you remember, was key to our evaluation. It was the first anchor, and people would be coming into our city for short and extended stays, and they would use the theater as well as the restaurants. It was really something that made the rest of the project work. And as you remember, the theater itself was something we were going to share revenues on with the developers, because they weren't making enough money off of that. Now we find ourselves without the hotel anchor and without 83,000 square feet of commercial space. At least $30,000 will be lost per year from net revenues to the city, and that's according to city staff. And we're being asked to accept another 72 apartments for a grand total of 394. I would ask and join my neighbors in asking that you turn down, on our behalf, on everyone's behalf, the special exception amendment that has been, that you've been asked, that is in progress, without sending it to boards and commissions. It doesn't meet the criteria you so wisely committed us to, a signed contract from a hotel and from a theater group. And it doesn't cut down on the height and density of this enormous project. They're coming back, still asking for 85 feet on Broad Street. Why? What are they giving us that justifies that? Because now the project is only 17.5 percent commercial. So, we put a lot of work in on this together. We did it over two years. I ask you not to commit our summers, this summer, to working on this. We want to help you plan a school. We want to help you, you know, high school. We want to help you work on the renovations to City Hall and to the library. And frankly, I have a book I have to finish. So, I would ask you not to circulate this amendment to boards and commissions. It's not fair to you. It's not fair to us or the city staff. We have a lot of other work to do together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the speakers who wish to speak at this time, unless there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak. So, with that, I do have some additional speaker slips of folks who asked to speak later in the meeting, which you can do. Let's move on to council requests, any requests of council. Ms. Hardy?
Mr. Shields, since we got a number of public comments about Founder's Row, perhaps in your city manager's report, you can give us an update on the schedule and when we might hear from Founder's Row.
Okay. Vice Mayor Conley?
overgrown bushes at Oak and West and at Oak and Pop, or at West and Poplar, where it's hard to see around overgrown bushes. What does the city do on those? People want to know if, how we can get them to be cut on private property.
Typically, the zoning administrator's in charge of enforcing a site distance triangle at all intersections, and so if there is a, it's generally complaint-driven. We don't go out and inspect for it, but when we hear about it, we will go and inspect and then contact the property owner and ask for their cooperation in that. It can sometimes be difficult, particularly if plantings are an important part of a screen on a busy street. The neighbors will be concerned about that request, and so we try to work with them on that. Ultimately, our purpose, though, is to make a safe intersection.
Okay. Other council, Ms. Oliver, then Mr. Snyder?
Do we have an update about the streetlights on Annandale Road?
I'm afraid not. I will see if we can find out what's happening.
Snyder?
Thanks a lot. Mr. Mayor, I'll be out on job-related travel next Monday night, but it sure seems to me like this Founder's Row project is not ready to move to the next step. Thank you.
Okay. Other speakers, other requests? Okay. Mr. Manager, would you like to give us your report?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. I'll start with just the Founder's Row. What the intention was, was to first provide the Mill Creek team an opportunity to come to council and just state their case for the proposed amendment to the special exception. And we have not yet set that date. I do think that, at this point, the work session next week, which is a very full work session, is not a good night for that, so we'll take that off the council's agenda schedule and set that for an alternate date after further discussions with the Mill Creek team. Once that's done, we will contact those who have contacted us about the status of the project, just so people are informed about the status. But as of now, the June 19 date should be assumed that it will not be on the agenda that night. A couple of other scheduling items. I'll start off by just noting that we are doing, we have been doing a lot of work on the capital improvements program. As we anticipated, after April, when the council adopted the budget, we knew that in the month of June and July, we'd be revisiting the capital improvements program in light of the Perkins Eastman feasibility study. We've now received that. The council was briefed on that last week. We had a well-attended town hall meeting on Saturday to provide an opportunity for the public to hear Perkins Eastman's feasibility study, along with a brief discussion of financing and an update on the small area plan. The financing piece really is the focus of city staff's work now. We, with the Economic Working Group, we have the firm of Alvarez and Marcel, who will be providing us with commercial real estate advisory services. And with beginning, you know, the first deliverable is an independent opinion on the value of the site. That will then be factored into our financing program that we will discuss first with the Budget and Finance Committee on Friday morning at 9:00 a.m., and then from there on Monday, June 19, with the full city council and school board. There are a couple of key things in terms of schedule for the council to keep in mind, and that is that what we're laying out, at least is what we'll be trying to accomplish, is a consideration of a referendum ordinance that would need to be enacted by July 24. In order to meet that date, we need a first reading on June 26. So this June 19 work session will look at a draft of that referendum ordinance and discuss it, and then discuss placing that on the agenda for June 26 for first reading. In addition, we'll have a draft amendment to the CIP to present on June 19 for discussion about having that on the agenda also on June 26 for first reading. So the amendment to the CIP and the referendum question would go through the process at the same time with a June 26 first reading and July 24 second reading. So that's the schedule that we're working around, and we've got a lot of work to be able to pull that off. I will note, just in closing, we have had, over the course of the past several months, routine surveillance from our rating agencies. Fitch provided surveillance in December, and Moody's provided surveillance just two weeks ago. Fitch affirmed the city's AAA rating. S&amp;P has affirmed the city's AAA rating when they last looked at us, which is a little bit further back. Moody's also affirmed the city's AA1 rating, which is one notch below AAA with a positive outlook. And I'll just note a couple of the comments that Moody's made in their credit report. They did affirm the positive outlook, again, because of the city's sound financial position and healthy reserves, and the city's location within the National Capital Region. They noted our moderate debt burden, but also noted our very notable future debt plans. And so strengths, they noted, conservative budgeting practices and healthy reserves. They were particularly pleased to see the contribution to reserves in the FY18 budget. The challenges is, they noted the substantial capital plan to increase debt burden in the near term, and of course, we're all very familiar with that and very attuned to the challenges that are associated with it. And they also, Moody's also noted, the proximity to DC leaves the local economy and employment vulnerable to potential federal cuts. The full rating report has been sent out to council and is available to the public as well. The work that we'll be doing on the financial modeling, we really want to wrestle with the questions of affordability. We want to wrestle and really confront the questions about the city's long-term financial condition. The amount of debt that is associated with the capital plan, and particularly the high school project, is the watershed event, I think, for the city council. I think there will, for the city's finances, we will, there's the period before that debt issuance, and there's the period after that. And they will be different because of that extraordinary obligation that we will then build into all of our subsequent budgets thereafter. Now, we are putting together, I think, a very sound strategy to mitigate that impact on the taxpayers. There is risk associated with that, and as we go into it, we'll try to be very clear-eyed about those risks, assess them very carefully, and then have all the information at the council, and then ultimately, the voters will need to have as they consider these questions potentially next fall. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Ms. Hardy?
Sounds like we've got a very full agenda next week. As part of that broader look at the CIP, I just want to explicitly ask and hope that we're actually going to be talking about any expansion needs at TJ as well. I know that recently, all the focus has been on George Mason, but I think if we look at the entire CIP, I think it would be irresponsible for us to make decisions about a five-year CIP without some knowledge of what we might need to do at TJ. I know the school board's been wrestling with that as well, so I would love to make sure that's part of the discussion next week.
Other questions? Mr. Snyder?
So in preparation for this, I'd like to iterate publicly what I ask for privately, which is for the city staff to give me a proposal for City Hall that is absolutely limited to the safety improvements absolutely necessary for court and police safety. Last plan we saw were major renovations, including an entirely new city council chamber, which strikes me as unnecessary. So among the options to consider, I'd like to see something that includes just the, in view of the other elements of the CIP and the huge financial challenges, the absolute necessary improvements to deal with court and police safety.
Okay. Anything else? All right, let's move on. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item?
Yes, we have TO 17-10, Ordinance to amend Ordinances 1963 and 1969 regarding the budget of expenditures and revenues appropriating funds for fiscal year 2017 for the general fund and capital improvements program funds.
And our finance director, Karen Baw, will provide this report. And I should have noted in my, in my report on the Moody's rating agency that Ms. Baw was the key staff lead in getting all the information to Moody's and the chief point of contact for that rating where our rating was sustained, but, so thank you for that.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. The first reading of the amendments to the budget ordinance include an appropriation of $200,000 from the Capital Reserve for planning phase of the George Mason High School project, use of up to $450,000 from building fee, building permit fee reserve to make up for the loss of revenue from a major project this year in fiscal year 15. That may not be realized by end of June, and increase of $10,584 in general fund appropriation supported by grants and donations, and interdepartment transfers of $2,000, $100,000 to Department of Development Services, and another $100,000 for, uh... for the 100, for the sheriff's fee for the jail services. So those are the two. And with that, I conclude my report. If you have any questions, open to that.
Any questions? That was easy.
So this ordinance is for, before you for first reading, our request is that it, timing is immediate so that we could have it adopted prior to the end of this fiscal year, and a lot of this really is just to make the necessary adjustments for the, and as we typically do at this time of year.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to grant first reading for TO 17-10, scheduled second reading and public hearing for June 26, 2017, and I advertise the same according to law.
Second. Do we have any public comments on this? Hearing none? Ms. Heath? For me to call the vote on the motion to grant a first reading to TO 17-10? Okay. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
That went very quickly, that last, a little too quickly. Okay, why don't you call the next item?
Sure. We have TR 17-16, Resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to the Capital Funding Agreement, CFA, among Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority, WAMADA, and the contributing jurisdictions to opt-in to WAMADA's issuance of debt up to $575.2 million, consistent with the CFA, to opt-in to WAMADA's refinancing of the gross revenue transit bonds series 2009A and 2009B, and to execute such documents as may be necessary and approved by the city attorney to participate in the issuance of debt and the refinancing of the 2009 bonds.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shields, or I guess Ms. Mester?
Good evening, council. I'd just like to give you a quick summary of the item that's before you. We did discuss this in detail during your work session last week. As that long title indicates, the council is being requested to take three actions this evening. One is to approve the capital financing agreement, which is just a one-year extension, specify that for the bonds that have already been approved, whether to opt-in or opt-out, and council, staff is recommending to council that we opt-in. And then for council to authorize refunding the 2009 bonds, which will result in a savings over the 17-year life of the bonds for that refinancing, and staff is also requesting that council approve the opt-in. This is on a type timeline. There's three different timelines, so staff is recommending for consistency and ease of bringing these items before council, that you would approve it this evening, which is the, meets the earliest of the deadlines. This is for one year, and staff will continue to work with WAMADA and council on our regional and governance issues on funding as we move into the future years, ensuring safe and reliable WAMADA, but also sustainable funding. That will be both at regional and state level issues. And this Friday, the Revenue Advisory Board, which has been appointed by the General Assembly, will be meeting again to discuss the need for dedicated WAMADA funding from the state level. Karen is here with us, and I can answer any questions that you have regarding this.
Great. Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Cindy. I know the whereas clauses were worked on last year, and I think will express a lot of our significant concerns, including the increasing drain on the local government budget and the need for federal and state funders to step forward. My question to you is, what if we don't agree to this? What are our obligations? In other words, are we assuming new obligations here, or are these obligations there and would simply become more expensive if we didn't accept the package that you presented to us?
For the 2009 bond series, those are already obligations that we have, and so if we don't participate in the refunding and the refinancing, the city would need to come up with $552,000, which is currently not in your FY18 budget, or 17, and that money needs to be available by June 27. So that's an immediate financial impact that's not budgeted for. The savings is actually better in that case. The FY18 in future is future financing obligations that haven't been incurred yet. Staff would recommend that on the regional and state level, we continue to work with WAMADA, proceed with this one year, because we need the rail cars to ensure safe and reliable rail, as well as the bus. Those are legal contracts WAMADA's already entered into, so the funding needs to be financed at some level. We do think it's very important, as you noted in the whereas, is that we continue to work very strongly and collaboratively to address the sustainability of the financial needs of WAMADA. Any further stuff, I might defer to the city attorney, whether we could speak about legal issues.
Well, I think, as Ms. Mester said, the 2009 bonds are bonds that we have already, the city already opted in when they were initially issued, and this refunding is going to reduce the interest rate and actually be a savings to our obligation to annually pay for that now. The, the participation in the upcoming 2018 bonds, it would cost us more if the city was to try to do that, to pay for its share of that on its own, its share being about $1.7 But the city does not have an absolute legal obligation. It's up to the council whether to participate in this agreement. But this agreement does enable us to continue participating and working as part of Metro and making the whole system work, and participating to improve the financial situation overall.
If I could add note, it also keeps us at the table for any additional redevelopment and benefits, where we want transit to benefit the city and help council to implement your adopted transportation chapter of the comp plan, so that we can maximize all modes of travel and not just vehicles.
No, I'll just make a couple of comments later on when people are done with their questions.
Z?
Well, I think this, on the surface of it, seems like a very dry topic here, but can you affirm that what's being asked of council here is to approve 25 years of debt service at $117,000 per year? You also affirm that for FY 2018, the city's total contribution, if we approve all this to WAMADA, is $5,65,724. to WAMADA, is $5,65,724. Can you tell me, with regard to the population of the city here, how much that translates to for every man, woman, and child?
Calculator, but...
Can you also, while you're doing the math, tell me if any of the two metro stations that bear our name stop in the city?
Could you clarify that for me? I was looking at the total number, sorry.
Can you verify for me whether any of the two metro stops bearing our name, East to West Falls Church, actually stop within the city boundaries?
The metro station and the rails that come through, both of...
The rail stations, yes.
They provide service to the city. They have the city's name, and they are just outside the quarters.
The answer to my question is, they do not stop in the city proper. Is that correct? And so the other part of that question, which I probably framed too ambiguously, was, we have metro buses, do we have clarity with respect to the metro bus stops in the city and the metro bus services, so that our citizens are happy with the service as provided?
I would say that as it relates to bus, we have a lot of work to do to increase reliability of those and improve routes. And we're currently working on that. The Route 7 Enhanced Project is another area that would enhance that. And for the calculations and the formulas, it varies for bus contributions, metro access for elderly and disabled, and for rail. And so I do want to confirm to the follow-up, Mr. Z, to your question, do the metro rail stop within the city boundaries? They do not, since they're not located within the city. But we also pay a lesser share for the rail users, although we do know we have citizens using the metro stations. Not sure if Mr. Shields has finished calculating. I didn't have my calculator up here.
Well, you had asked what the per capita contribution was in the current fiscal year. And so what, our contribution is 3.3 million, and that's our operating contribution plus our capital contribution. And then in addition to that, because of this payment of 1.7 million, which we'd be agreeing to with this capital finance agreement, then the total in this fiscal year is $5,65,000. That's $361 per capita. The number is, it's not your normal number, because you do have that one-time capital expenditure, and we'll be paying that debt service over the next 20 years, as you did note. I would just say that these numbers really aren't the big ones. The big ones are coming next year. And so I think that's the, that's the reason there is so much attention focused on this WAMADA agreement, that with the capital plan, these debt issuances are really going to start to compound. And we're talking about not, this time next year, we're not talking about a city obligation of 1.7 million with $117,000 in annual debt service. We're talking about what will likely be a much bigger number this time next year. And so the signal that has been sent by the council and the whereas', tend to capture that, and the council can discuss whether they've shaped that message exactly the way you want it to be shaped, is to send a signal of concern about the cost trajectory that is being borne by the city's general fund. That is not what has historically been the case. It's about 2.5 cents on the tax rate today, and that is likely to grow to 6 cents on the tax rate over the next four years. That's, that's the real issue. This agreement is a step in that direction, but the bigger steps are going to be asked in FY '19 and beyond.
Thank you for anticipating my question.
And to the point that Mr. Shields just highlighted, I'll call your attention to line 68, which is the fiscal impact that relates to Mr. Z's question, that response. And it does have a big general fund impact going forward. But I do want to note that of the 3 million, 3.3 million we have now, 2.7 of that is being covered by grants and state funding. And so going forward, it picks up the general share, but we need to make sure that our active participation and benefit of those other funding sources remains, so it's not totally borne on the local tax dollars. Although our citizens are still participating in that, we want the money come back to the citizens' benefit.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Shields? Ms. Oliver?
So I have a question about the bond issuance, opt-in or opt-out. The way you've presented the data, it looks like it's a no-brainer to opt-in, because it's $117,000 against $183. And a lot of that difference is attributable, attributable to the fact that we, by policy, would issue a 20-year bond with a level principal schedule versus WAMADA, which is issuing a 25-year bond at level debt. I just wanted, by way of comparison, to understand the expected interest rate that generated that $183,000. How does our interest rate compare to WAMADA's of 4.25%?
We are, by recommending to opt-in, we are trying to be part of the larger pool, since they're going to be issuing a 575 million. We, by having to do just the 1.75 million, I do not have the exact figures with me right now, but would be subject to a much higher administrative cost on that.
So I'm just trying to understand, what rate was used to calculate the 183%?
We got these numbers from WAMADA. And we have the whole debt schedule calculation that uses the 4.25% on the 20-year.
I don't know what our...
Same.
The same?
Same.
So it's, so the difference in the cost is only related to the change in the length of the bond and the...
The value.
And the, whether it's level debt versus level...
Principal.
Principal. It has nothing to do with the rate. Okay. And then...
Plus also, bearing in mind that we are getting ready to issue more debt internally, so we don't want to...
Well, that was my second question.
Yes.
I wanted to understand how the rating agencies consider the impacts of debt that we have through third parties, such as WAMADA. I mean, is this something that is a factor? Or is it helpful to take stuff off book, if you will?
Our, our recommendation is it's more helpful to have it off of our books. And it's a reasonable debate. But given the fact that we have such a big capital program, our recommendation is not to take on any debt that we don't need to. This agreement is a form of sort of inflexibility in our budget. I think the rating agencies will see them pretty much the same, but probably on balance, they would tend to prefer not seeing it on their, on our books.
When we calculate our ratios for our debt ratios, do we include debt such as this? We do not.
Other questions? Are you making a comment, Mr. Snyder? Before you do that, I'm going to open this up to the public. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak to this matter? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Mr. Snyder?
So from the beginning of Metro, the City of Falls Church has been an active participant. Yet increasingly, the cost-benefit analysis gets worse and worse and worse. Costs go up, benefits go down. It gets more and more difficult to justify the kind of support that we've provided in the past, let alone the kinds of increases that we're talking about in the future. On the other hand, we've got to deal with Metro on the proposed high school development. And there is some secondary benefit to the city, if you will, from a healthy Metro system. And I think that perhaps future development in the city, to some extent, will rely on a healthy Metro system, even though the service to the city is, is sort of less than optimal. So the question is, and then you've got these immediate financial conditions, which appear to argue in favor of supporting this action. So the question is, how do we literally deliver to Metro? One approach would be to support this action tonight, but to deliver to Metro that we're serious. This is it. We're not going to meet their proposed demands in the future. If we're going to do that, then I suggest this wording on line 27, "Whereas the City of Falls Church pays at least its fair share for system operations, but likely Metro increases are not sustainable and will not be approved due to other demands on public money." That strengthens the message, and it seems to me, makes it pretty clear that the cost-benefit analysis is failing. And in order to improve that cost-benefit analysis, A, the demands on us have to be less, and we have to be getting more benefit from the amount of money that we're paying, both in terms of service and in terms of cooperation with regard to our school campus projects. So that would be my suggestion. Otherwise, it becomes extremely difficult to support this action. I think we need to deliver the message now finely, clearly, and without, without any question. So I would suggest rewording line 127 and 128 to read as follows, "Whereas the City of Falls Church pays at least its fair share for system operations, but likely Metro increases are not sustainable and will not be approved due to other demands on public money."
Anyone have any thoughts on the suggested revisions? Someone want to make a motion?
This is really tough, because on the short term, there are some benefits to doing this, but we would communicate, and we need to communicate very strongly to the whole world, that others have to come forward and pay their fair share, because we already are. So then I would move approval of TR 17-16, with the change in language on lines 127, 128, and 129, to read, "Whereas the City of Falls Church pays at least its fair share for system operations, but likely Metro increases are not sustainable and will not be approved due to other demands on public money."
Do you be willing to soften that at all, just say, "will likely not be approved" as opposed to "will not be approved"? I mean, I don't know whether...
Okay, yeah. But no, that's it. Yeah, I would move that, then.
I think that'd be a little more prudent. I'd feel a little more comfortable with that if we are to accept language like that. Let me ask the city attorney, does he need to make any amendment to his motion? Or I can't even remember how that came about. Do we need to change anything?
I think when you move approval, you can just reference the amendments. I have them recorded. So if you can just...
He's already made a motion.
I guess it doesn't say approval of the resolution, but with the resolution, we can just reference that the resolution is as amended.
All right, well, he's already made a motion.
I think he did make the motion to approve it, yes. Changes.
I move TR 17-16 with a change in language.
All right. Do we have a second?
I need to hear that change, because there was another change, and now I'm confused.
I can read it. At lines 127 through 129, the whereas clause is changed to read as follows in its entirety, "Whereas the City of Falls Church pays at least its fair share for system operations, but likely Metro increases are not sustainable and likely will not be approved due to other demands on public money."
You have to have the word "likely" twice in one sentence. It's very confusing.
It could be certainly wordsmith. The point I was trying to make is that I don't know if it's, it's good idea for us to say "it will not be approved," since nothing's before us yet, so...
We could change the first "likely" to "expected."
Or "anticipated."
Or "current projected."
All right. With that, do we have a second?
So then the but is?
But "expected Metro increases are not sustainable and likely will not be approved due to other demands on public money."
Likely will not be approved. Wordsmith that a little bit, too. So it says, "will be..."
How about...
Seriously weighed before being approved, or unlikely to be approved, or unlikely to be approved is much better than not.
"Current projected Metro increases are not sustainable and may not be approved due to other demands?" Just say "may." The phrase "current projected," I think, is important, because that is, that gives the ability to put some pressure on those current projections, and try to work with their regional partners to change those current projections.
I assume there's a word that I would have favored, would have been "may" as well. The context the city manager just used, "may not be approved."
Well, since you have a disagreement over the language, I'm going to suggest that perhaps somebody make a motion to amend the motion as it originally was, which was with two "likelys." And then you can decide whether you want to go to the different language or not.
Okay. So I'm more than willing to accept some, some changes. So read to me where we think we are right now.
"The City of Falls Church pays at least its fair share for system operations, but current projected Metro increases are not sustainable and may not be approved due to other demands on public money."
I'm okay with that. So I would change, I would offer a new motion with that language.
All right. Do we have a second? Sorry. Everybody here is on board with the, I thought we talked about this in closed session the other night, and talk about what we talked about, I suppose. But what are we saying here? I mean, is the newspaper headline that "Will Falls Church says that we're not going to pay our share of Metro in the future because we have to do other stuff?" Is that what we're saying? That's not what we're saying. What are we saying?
What are we, we're saying that, exactly what we're saying, the current projections are not sustainable.
What does that mean? I mean, we're not in charge of the current projections. The projections are what they are. I mean, the projections will come out, and the participation jurisdictions will decide whether they can be financed or not. That's, it may be too bad that they're not sustainable, but that's not really our business.
It's our business to determine, to signal to Metro that the kinds of projections that they're talking about will not be supported, will likely not be supported.
Okay, I don't know. In an environment where the main thing that we want to do, as far as I can see, in the city, is associate ourselves with, you know, Metro as a public transit asset for not only the high school campus and attended development, but every other development anybody comes forward, they propose, the strength of it is that we have access to Metro. I'm just not sure that I'm comfortable, maybe others will be, in voting to say, you know, we're, we're not going to really play ball with Metro in the future, because we have to do a city hall and a library and a high school. So I guess, I mean, that's not a question. It's just, I thought that where we were coming into this meeting was, we're going to see how things play out and see what opportunities that we have, you know, to work with Metro on in the next year, and, you know, basically hope that there gets to be a regional sales tax kicked in to enable this system to be sustainable. Because without that, you're right, I mean, cost trajectory of Metro is not sustainable. But this isn't going to, like, go into that, which I don't think it should, then I would just be perfectly happy with the language as staff presented it. That's just me.
I could chime in. My understanding is that we are authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement, the one-year extension, so we continue having a seat at the table. But we are sending a strong signal and message that these costs are unsustainable. But I agree with Mr. Duncan that, at the end of the day, between our citizens' reliance on Metro, even though we don't have metro stations in our border, you know, we still have metro buses, and we have our citizens that use the metro stations. I don't think it's appropriate for us to probably take our ball and go home. And so I think it's important for us to continue funding it. But I think, at the same time, send the message that says, we need to rein in these costs and figure out a better model going forward. So I think we're doing both. I don't think we are stopping our funding, our support, but I think we're, my understanding, and Mr. Snyder, please jump in, is that we are putting stronger language in there to hopefully change it going forward. But I think we see the need to continue the extension for the year. Is that correct, Ms. Mester?
Yes. And I would say, if you look at the resolution as a whole, we start off talking about the importance of the partnership for the joint campus and bike share. We talk about improved service needed for our citizens. And then when you get down to line 130... to line 131, it highlights need dedicated funding to make this sustainable as a whole system, and that the federal government, Virginia, Maryland, DC, need to step up, not just the five localities in Northern Virginia, trying to do our share. So I think, in a rounded picture, it sends all the messages that staff recommends council consider, including keeping us a seat at the table, which we will need both at the staff and the elected level.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Z.
Well, I don't know how much of a strong signal we can send to metro with this change in resolution. They may see that nothing more as a safety match being lit in an empty auditorium, and for the effect that would have, but the fact of matter is, you know, as we go forward, and next year and the year after that, there are going to be even larger demands, and I just don't want to have a conversation up here about whether we should raise tax to pay for metro, or fund our failing infrastructure. I mean, that's, there are two failing infrastructures at issue here, and you need to do what we can to try to solve the problem, it was metro's help, if possible, because we're getting rates that we're being tasked with are similar to what a larger county with more resources would have, so that's, went out vastly unfair. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, why don't we, let's get on with this. We do have a motion. Did we have a second for the motion? I can't recall.
Mr. Z seconded the motion.
We did, okay. Madam Clerk, do you want to call the roll call here, the vote?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
No.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Z?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you, council.
Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone wants to remove from the consent agenda? If not, Mr. Shields, would you like to go ahead and... Yes?
Before you begin, you may want to make a motion. It's past 10 o'clock now.
I'll move to extend the meeting past 10:00 PM.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, we'll continue. Is there anything on this consent agenda? Does anyone have any concerns or anything? If not, let's go ahead and have a motion, or can we have a motion?
May I remove to approve the items on the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
What's that? I'll tell you what, I'm going to call, before we take the vote, I'm going to call, I don't know whether we need to actually open this to public, but is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to these items? Seeing none, the matter is closed to the public. Let's go ahead, and we do have a motion and a second. I'm going to call, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Mr. Shields, will you go ahead and move on to the next item, the other business?
Mr. Mayor, could we please take a short break?
Of course we can, sure. We're going to take about a three-minute break, and we'll reconvene at about 10:15. Okay, why don't we go ahead and get started with the remainder of our hearing? If you all could have a seat, please, we would greatly appreciate it. Let's move on to other business. Mr. Shields, do you have anything regarding the campus project and its update?
Mayor, I provided a brief report and an update during the manager's report, and so I was not planning to elaborate on that. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if there's a desire for further discussion on those items, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, are there any questions, Ms. Hardy?
Just a comment, for us to potentially look at another public town hall or opportunity, potentially in July. So I know that this past town hall, we had good turnout, but I think we were intentionally light on some of the financials, mainly because the economic development work stream is just underway, and we're getting a first look at it end of this week. So I think as that work stream gets further along, I think it'll be important to kind of bring the community along on where those numbers look, and how we bring both work streams together between the options on the school side and economic development offset. So if we can potentially look at maybe another date in July before the council has to make a final referendum vote, I think it's important to make sure we keep the community updated.
Okay, yeah, we'll work to schedule that.
And speaking of keeping the community updated, there were some excellent questions that were asked on Saturday, as well as on Sunday, at the Village Preservation Improvement Society Forum, and I know Ms. Hardy has started to work on the answers to those questions, but I'd like to see those worked on by staff, school and city staff, and put up in a form of FAQs, because a lot of those questions keep coming up over and over, and we have good answers to them, and it's nice to be able to share that with community members, so they know that we're covering all the bases.
Okay, is there anything else on the campus update? If not, let's move on to the inside development project. And appreciate you guys sticking around, I know it's been a long night for you all. Thank you for staying with us. Given the late hour, to the extent you can condense your presentation, we'd certainly appreciate it. We did get your written responses, and I think we've all read your responses, which I think are the gist of the purpose of tonight's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, to start for the record, I'm Greg Regal. I'm a land use and zoning lawyer with McGuire Woods Law Firm, and I represent the applicants in this land use matter, and I will acknowledge that we're in sort of an unusual procedural place, in terms of this sort of other business designation, but as the council undoubtedly recalls, we had a very active and engaged work session a week ago. You asked a number of questions. I think we came here ostensibly to try to settle on a reasonable schedule, and we also wanted to take the opportunity to frankly provide you with some initial answers to the questions that you had posed, and we do have a short presentation that highlights some of those answers, and I think we can go through with good pace and good tempo. I will say upfront that we are still evolving very much. We do not have all the answers tonight, but we thought it was proper and appropriate to show some good faith, some progress, and frame some things that we're going to be formally incorporating into our submission as we go forward, and of course, which will be fully evaluated by your staff. So with that as background, unless the city manager has anything to add, I'll go through it, and I'll go through it fairly quickly.
Why don't you do that, and then we'll let staff respond, as needed, and we also have some members of the public who wish to speak as well. We'll give them a chance.
And I don't have control of the slides, so if you could...
Do you have the clicker, Cindy?
I think I'm okay. Left and right. All right, so, progress since June 5th work session. We think a lot of progress in a short amount of time. I won't read all these verbatim, but we've made some additional commitments to tighten the commitments to the office and the retail, to legitimize it, to maximize its fiscal impact. We've tried to clarify the fiscal impacts. Probably among the most important things we've done in the last week is we did have a community meeting with the folks at Lawton Street that were available. That was done last Friday morning, at your very good suggestion, and that meeting has produced some additional revisions that'll be incorporated into the package as well, including setbacks and other design-related things that we'll touch on. The retail program is something that we did want to spend some time on. The new commitment is the fourth bullet down, in terms of a definitive commitment, that what we've shown as restaurant space will be unequivocally restaurant space, in that 7,800 square feet that you're undoubtedly familiar with. That maximizes the fiscal impact, that maximizes the activation, and is something that will go into our voluntary concessions. I would also add that, you know, Mr. Mayor had asked in the work session, sort of what makes this special from a retail standpoint, and really what makes it special is the embracing and the activation of your arts and entertainment district, and I'll show you a slide that gets at that very quickly. We're also continuing down the path of the curated retail, things that are local, things that are distinctive, and things that will contribute much more to the vibrancy of the city than just putting in indiscriminate chain retailers. But the retail story has gotten tighter since last week, and the commitment to those restaurant uses is not an insignificant one, I'd respectfully suggest. We took a shot of the retail program to try to put things a little better context, and what this is intended to show you is our project, really anchored by the State Theater at the upper left, and Creative Cauldron in the lower right. And you heard some interesting testimony tonight about the direct and the indirect benefits of having Creative Cauldron in this project. It's something we're committed to, and I'll touch on that more in a moment. But if you take this together, this is your arts and entertainment district by virtue of existing uses, and again, by virtue of those proposed restaurant spaces I've talked to, which are now committed to restaurants, and of course, the Creative Cauldron. On the office program, the point we want to emphasize in response to your commitments about, or your questions about its legitimacy, its permanency, I draw your attention to the third bullet. We will commit in the voluntary concessions to make the office building delivered concurrent with the residential program, so you're getting the collective benefit that we've been selling from the beginning, in terms of this being, as Ms. Hardy touched on earlier in the comment about the climate change and the environmental components, live, work, and play, and it's the work that's been missing, and we're leaning hard into this office development to make it happen. I would respectfully suggest we have the ultimate aligned interest here with respect to the office use. If we get it right, we validate Falls Church as a legitimate office opportunity. If we get it wrong, you're simply doubling down on the negative perceptions in terms of why office doesn't work. To that end, we want as much office space as this market will bear, we want it to be best-in-class, and again, we will deliver it concurrently, which is a new commitment, not previously in the voluntary concessions that we'll be incorporating. Fiscal impacts, you've seen these numbers. I touched on it a moment ago, that by, the firm commitment to the restaurant is going to strengthen the fiscal impacts, it's going to narrow those gaps, as you heard from Mr. Goff. We've restated a couple of the key numbers, roughly almost a million and a half in net fiscal impact, more fiscal impact than similar mixed-use projects, a great fiscal story, and shows you what the office building can really do in that regard. I'd also remind you, too, again, the testimony you heard about Creative Cauldron, in terms of the indirect fiscal impacts, you heard about people coming into Falls Church that might otherwise be here, dining, shopping, and participating in your downtown as a result of a use like that. We had a meeting with the Lawton Street residents, at least those were available. This is not an endpoint of that discussion, if anything, it's a starting point or an evolving point. These were 13 things that we reached a conceptual agreement on, that again, we will incorporate into the application, incorporate into the voluntary concessions. Some of them are operational, some of them are design-related, and it hopefully reflects this developer and this applicant's commitment to continuing to work with the community, and it's an ongoing process as we go forward. I would call your attention to some of the increased setbacks, and some interesting operational things, everything from light controls to construction management, some of which was also reflected in the comments at the work session as well. We did brief up a slide on the transition issues. You had asked that of staff, we took a pass at it as well. I think the takeaway here, or the reset, is when you're looking at the T1 district and the predominant residential districts around us, the height limitation for commercial and mixed-use structures is 45 feet. That is the height we have designed to, with the stepped-back portions of the new building, as you saw in the work session. Operative word is compatible. We think we've got a good story, and we'll continue to work on it as we go forward. In response to community concerns, we did eliminate balconies on the Lawton Street side. It's a little hard to see in this lighting, but it makes the facade a little cleaner, I think arguably reduces the impacts further. This, again, will be made part of the record and available for staff's evaluation, but it was a direct feedback we heard from last Monday. We responded quickly, and wanted the council to have the benefit of just seeing that evolution. I talked about increased setbacks, we detailed those here. Further pushback from Lawton Street, and frankly, putting the space to good use, using it for activated sidewalks, using it for landscaping, using it to save existing trees, all themes we've touched on, and that translates to a very compelling streetscape on Lawton in terms of existing trees, sort of on the center to the right-hand side, new landscaping on the left, a sidewalk, and hopefully, again, part of that compatibility in that transition story. So, you had also asked about the connectivity through the garage. This is the detailed drawing that you had suggested we do, to show how that can be striped, how that can be functional, how that can be attractive. It also plays on the additional building openings and things we talked about in detail, again, things that will be formally incorporated into our package. And the Creative Cauldron story, you heard directly from the Creative Cauldron folks. I really wanted to call your attention to those last three bullets. There were some questions about the dynamics of the deal with Creative Cauldron. The goal here is permanency, the goal here is to make this their last stop, so to speak. It's up to a 20-year lease, CAM is included, taxes are included, and we're doing the build-out for the tenant to help ensure their viability. And I will stop there. We are delighted to answer questions. Hopefully, we've shown you some responsiveness, some good faith. We look forward to continuing the dialogue. I will say for the record, we are in agreement and accepting of the schedule that Mr. Shields has put forward, and again, hopefully you've seen some responsiveness and some good faith that'll help us meet that schedule, and we look forward to continuing the discussion with the community, and of course, within your boards and commissions and your overall structure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Regal. Let's go, turn it over to the city manager. Mr. Shields, do you have anything to add?
One thing I would just note, with respect to the fiscal impact analysis, the EDO, as you will recall from the meeting last week, we've projected a net-net fiscal impact of $898,000 per year. We are looking at, you know, we're looking at those numbers, we do stand by those, if there are any, you know, final tweaks to those, we're certainly happy to make those, but that's the high-end net-net analysis based on the city's fiscal impact model. In terms of the schedule...
If I could just stop you from saying, I thought there was a range, I seem to recall something like 250 to...
Yeah, the low end was 353, and so there's, you know, there's some big swings in terms of pupil assumptions, and then big swings on some of the commercial uses. So the high end is a low pupil count, and a lot of restaurant uses and other sort of high-yield commercial uses. The 350 is a very high pupil count, i.e. taking the biggest assumptions that we think we can responsibly make on pupil generation, and then low-yielding commercial uses in the retail. That's the real drivers between that range.
Vice Mayor Conley?
This letter dated June 8th, 1B says, under the applicant's economic analysis, the annual net fiscal impact after stabilization is 1.4 million. Is that different than, that wasn't a number you just said?
What you're reading from the...
I'm reading from the McGuire Woods letter, with their own economic analysis.
That's right, and that's not unusual. You know, very often, there's a difference in the analysis. I think probably for every application that I can ever recall, there's always been, you know, developers' view of what the fiscal impact is, they do their own analysis, they're certainly well-positioned to express that, but we use the fiscal impact model, and its principal value, we believe, is to be able to compare, we've been using it for a long time now, so we've used it consistently from project to project, and we monitor it after the fact, and it has generally been accurate.
Snyder?
Let me follow up. First of all, there's a big difference between the low end at 353,000 and 1.4 million. I mean, that is just, I really don't know what the fiscal impact is at this point, and it's a little hard to move forward on a project when you have that kind of range. So your range is really 350,000 to 1.4 million. So I think there's a serious issue about the refinement of those numbers being essential. Secondly, as I understand it, all of these numbers assume complete occupancy of the office building and the retail area, and it's my understanding, what, the only commitments we've received is, yeah, we'll build the space, but not the contracts, and not the assurance that we're actually going to see that. And after the experience on Maple with regard to a project where there is still the entire commercial area unrented, it's hard to figure out why we should go on faith about a commitment, oh, we'll build out retail, but what if it doesn't come? And that means all these numbers are based upon full occupancy and activity. So in the absence of that, I don't really know what I'm approving at this point, except a bunch of commitments and a bunch of hopes, maybe it'll achieve that amount. So, I'm going to be looking for a whole lot more in terms of financial analysis. The range is huge, and then all the ranges assume actual occupancy, and I haven't seen a commitment for actual occupancy, and perhaps payments in lieu of revenue if the occupancy doesn't occur as are committed. So that would be a point on that. Thanks.
Okay, why don't you continue with your presentation, Mr. Shields?
The only other note that I would make is that at the work session, we did note that we were comfortable with the project being referred out to boards and commissions as the staff review was happening on the force submission. There were questions about that. With the schedule that we've proposed, we would have staff comments then on the force submission, they would go out if there was a referral at that time. So we will be working on those staff comments, and they would be available at the end.
Clarification question? So given that what Mr. Regal just presented, it sounds like there's a 4B? Can we make sure that staff is reviewing this version?
Well, that's the issue. I mean, you know, projects go through changes, that's, they're supposed to, we expect the developer to be... We expect the developer to be responsive to comments that they receive. The staff commenting process is always going to lag behind that. And the changes that, you know, what the staff is coming on are some of the big fundamentals of the project, not so much the details. And so, you know, we'll try to keep up with them, but that's not an atypical feature of the SE process.
And I would just comment to your comment that it is important to have staff comments, staff analysis, as we just heard about fiscal impact. And so I think at some point, we're going to have to catch up, staff's going to have to catch up and provide us and the community...
Well, there's no question about that. Where that catch-up and it all comes together is when it comes back to the city council. You know, that's what we work towards. Now, what often will happen even in that process is the council makes final changes at second reading, and you don't often have the benefit of staff review of those. That has happened with every special exception that's been approved as well. That's just a process.
I got it. But even in first reading, I mean, in other words, to feel comfortable making a first reading, just as we heard on fiscal analysis, it's important to have staff input, and I think on that particular issue, clarity would be useful. Is that all you've got as far as staff report go then? Vice Mayor Connolly?
I just have a question on the timing then. As I'm looking at this, if we're looking at city council meeting July 10th, if we ask Insight to provide their very final 4B by June 28th, then that would give staff enough time for the July 10th package, right?
Well, the staff review process is exhaustive. So the planning staff sent it out to the arborist, the civil engineer, stormwater folks. So no, that takes three to four weeks for that process to occur. So when there are changes, it gets mailed out, it gets in people's inboxes, and they process them, and they don't turn it around in a day. They work through them and they think about them. And so that's why it's a long separation between first reading and second reading to allow that to happen.
Okay, there are the, Ms. Oliver?
I just have another schedule question. So if I look at the sheet that shows the original schedule and the second alternative schedule, we hold the same second reading date, and the way we do that is why crunching the boards and commissions down to two weeks. What about the boards and commissions that meet in the first half of the month?
You're correct, and that's the processes, the board and commission piece of it has been tightened down. I think, I think the council, in thinking about when second reading is, and just in the context of, there will be a lot of big issues that the council will be grappling with in the fall, like a lot of attention's going to be on, potentially on the school referendum, on elections and things like that, and whether you want a big land use case before you, and a month before the election. I do think that's worth thinking about, and it's not just, you know, for political reasons, it's just for the integrity of the process. So we're trying to keep distance from that November 8th date, frankly. Once you get too close to it, then it'd probably be better to go past that date and just allow it to be considered in an election ending. But that's kind of where we are on the schedule. I'd be happy to get council input on that, and I don't know that a decision's needed tonight on the DAAS, but as we're grappling with the schedule, I think that's worthy of consideration.
So I think my concern is I understand your desire to sort of finalize things if it's, if we're going to make a decision on this in October, well before the referendum and a lot of the other things that come up. But that does speak to why the original schedule had some advantages, in that it did give more time for the boards and commissions to come forward on this. So if we're going to go with a modified schedule and we're going to come back for first reading on July 10th, it would be helpful, as soon as we do that, or maybe even before that, that we have those boards and commissions that normally meet between the 1st and the 13th of the month, that staff make some provisions to reschedule those meetings to the second half of the month. I think we need to think about that, or have them have a special meeting, because I don't want to shortchange the board and commission process.
Actually, some of them don't even meet, the Parks and Rec, Rec and Parks doesn't meet in July or August, so they're not going to have another meeting until September. So if, I don't, others may be in that same situation, where they are going to take July and August completely off, because that's part of their calendar. So that really compromises it.
Okay, there are other comments? We do have some public speakers. Why don't we go ahead and use this time to go hear from them? Our first speaker is Tom Dugan, followed by Mary Chavez. Thanks for sticking around.
Thank you. Tom Dugan, 102 Lawton Street. As you know, we are not trying to stop this project and are in agreement with redeveloping this key property. And we're also very happy that Creative Cauldron's come into the project. But we are very concerned about the process for reviewing and moving forward. Last week, the city staff announced that they have not reviewed the fourth submission of the project proposal, but at the same time, they're recommending moving forward to first reading. This effort to shortcut the process is very disturbing, and it's very unfair to the neighborhood community. We have little time to review it, and we have no access to the city review process. The developer has used the oldest trick in the book by starting out with an extreme configuration and then gradually making a few changes which it claims are major. This type of negotiation does a disservice to the whole process. The setbacks started, that they mentioned tonight, started with a completely unreasonable 2 feet from the property line. The developer has just recently agreed to what the city code has required all along, 14 feet from the property line. The height on Lawton Street has only changed minimally at the edges since the third submission of this year, and is now at 64 feet at the Broad Street end of Lawton and 55 feet along 107 Lawton Street. Yet the special exception provisions require tapering to 35 feet next to the residential district. We have met with about everyone that would agree to meet with us, including city council, city council members, and I don't think anyone thought our requests were unreasonable. More than one council member has recommended moving density away from Lawton to alleviate the height issues and the current T1 lot. We have discussed with Insight several options for moving apartments to other parts of the project, but to no avail. I think we all know, with some redesign, the T1 lot can be reconfigured to properly reduce the height issues on Lawton Street. Lawton Street is very narrow, 25 feet wide, not the normal 50 feet. The height of the proposed apartments is even more pronounced at this short distance and clearly would inhibit privacy. Needless to say, our property values will go down. The transitional zoning was set for this very purpose, to protect and buffer the homes from commercial properties. This lot was T1 when we purchased our house, it was T1 when the owner purchased the lot. Why didn't the developer do the right thing and design the project, assuming the current zoning and comprehensive plan? They have two large B2 lots to build on as high as they want to go. This issue is not a NIMBY issue, this is a zoning and citizens' rights issue. Is every T1 lot in the city of Falls Church up for grabs to be rezoned based on developer wishes? These lots are zoned T1 for a reason, to protect the adjoining neighborhoods. At last week's city, or last week's council meeting, Insight mentioned that they could possibly add another level to the office building structure. Why then can't they add another level to the residential building? If the answer is they cannot go any higher because of the stick build, then they should build it properly with concrete and steel. This fourth submission, specifically the configuration of the T1 lot, there is no problem with the B2 lots, but the T1 lot is unacceptable. It is inappropriate. It is unfair to the neighborhood. It should be modified. This project is going to take years, and there should be no rush to push forward until it is properly designed. Need to do the right thing for the city and the residents. We need a new design to fix the problem, the height problem on Lawton Street, so we can all move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mary Chavez, and followed by Diane Dugan. Okay, that's fine.
I'd like to focus on Mary Chavez, 215 Lawton Street. I'd like to focus on how we get from point A to point B, specifically, how the council can honor its responsibility under the special exception ordinance to assure that its provisions are implemented. The special exception states in three separate places as follows, and I quote, "The height of all structures within a special exception project that abut in our district must be tapered to be compatible with the maximum heights permitted in the abutting our district," and that is 35 feet. The current height, as you've heard, of the proposed project is 55 feet along most of the 107 Lawton property line, and 64 feet along the lower part of Lawton Street. I think it's fair to say, the developer doesn't currently recognize this special exception height requirement and doesn't wish to implement it. How do we address the difference? Negotiations to date haven't gotten us there. My suggestion is this. The council has the ability to condition the use of the special exception ordinance. Councilmember Duncan has asked whether the council could condition approval on a requirement for a 35-foot height on the T1 lot, and city staff have acknowledged that this is feasible. We would strongly urge the council to do so. The developer could undertake this change quite simply by removing two levels of apartments along the Lawton Street and 107 property lines. The developer could still retain the ability to shift apartments to other parts of the structure, to modify the type of construction to support another floor of apartments in the midsection, or to gain credit with the council for reducing the residential to commercial ratio. Similar adjustments have been made in the interest of special exception requirements and comity with the neighbors for both Northgate and Mason Row. For Northgate, the Hikimian developers noted at three stories in height, plus or minus 30 feet, the townhouse units would conform to standard single-family building heights and would block almost any direct view of the apartment building from the adjacent neighbors. The developers at Mason Row also agreed to provide a three-story townhouse-style structure for apartments on Park Avenue to buffer houses across the street. In both cases, heights were specifically reduced to be compatible with the heights of neighboring homes. This is eminently reasonable, and it's an eminently reasonable request that provides a path to an equitable solution, permitting the project to go forward while honoring the council's responsibility to uphold the requirements of the special exception. I thank you.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker is Susan Ehrman. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak to this matter, please fill out a speaker slip and come forward. Otherwise, after this, the public hearing portion will be closed. Welcome.
Good evening. Susan Ehrman, I'm here as counsel for Ambassador Eric Schultz and Claudia Schultz. My office address is 1364, Suite 201 Beverly Road in McLean, Virginia. As you know, the ambassador and his wife are overseas, they felt that they needed to hire counsel so that their voices were heard. I think that their colleagues and the Lawton neighbors have done an excellent job, so I'll try to keep my comments short. They wrote the city a very thoughtful, reflective, and fact-based letter outlining their concerns and opposition to this proposed mixed-use project. I ask that you read it, and I ask you then to reread it. As I will not repeat all of their opposition points, I want to just question counsel as to the process. Now, what I've heard many members say is that this really wasn't quite ready for prime time, because you now have the fourth submission or the 4B submission without proper staff input. And I think staff input is important for transparency, it's important to flesh out all the concepts and questions, and it's important for the public as well, because they glean information from the staff reports. That wasn't done. The fourth rendition came to you last Monday, you went ahead, and instead of just putting the brakes on, you went ahead and started discussing that without any input from staff. And I think that is a detriment to the citizens of the city. Although it has some unique concepts to it, it is not unique enough for you to change the underlying zoning. You have the T, the transitional zoning, which was affirmed most recently in your zoning plan, and this was there as a buffer to your low-density residential. And it was discussed and was maintained there at that corner on Lawton as being important to your residential transition, and that cannot be ignored. And I ask you, and the Schultz's ask you not to ignore that. You can have a successful development, maintaining these two different, the dense business as well as the transition, and we ask you to look forward to that. They ask that council not be so easily swayed with unsupported numbers and smart design. I suggest that council should always seek smart design and proper ingress and egress, but that should not be the basis to change the underlying zoning and have such a dense residential, or your low-density residential. I appreciated the concepts and the discussion from the DAAS in reference to a lot happening over the summer. For some reason, in all of my years of service and as a resident as well, so much seems to happen over the summer without proper input, and a lot of people tend to be away. If your boards and commissions are on hiatus for the summer and you need those boards and commissions for review, then I don't think it's appropriate to push the deadline to October 1 for a political position, because that's what it appears to have been, rather than just a proper process. Of course, we don't want so much transition in our governing body that anyone would have to start over, but I don't think having this drop deadline of October is wise. And I think that you should probably maybe have staff catch up at some point and slow down the process. So on their behalf, just, they don't support the project as it's set forth, and personally, I just wish you well, trying to get this done. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? If not, the matter is closed, the public. Are there comments or additional questions from council? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you very much. One of the attractive elements of the proposal is the partnership with Creative Cauldron, and there's some, something in our materials about the affordable lease and whatever. So what are the conditions for Creative Cauldron that are part of this project? Years, the amount of rent, all of that, so that we have the specifics to be assured that in fact, this is a good thing for Creative Cauldron? That would be question number one. Question number two, I've already talked about the discrepancies in the different financial aspects. And the third issue is, the picture shows retail, I guess, and restaurants, but if you're just building the space, we have no guarantee that restaurants are actually going to be in there. So that tends to undercut whatever the financial numbers are, so help me understand some of these things.
We do, and I won't give a lengthy response, but I want to be clear that one of the commitments that we've put forth tonight is that the restaurant spaces will be restaurants, and that does significantly tighten that fiscal analysis. And I think we share your view of wanting that certainty and telling that story. We think we have an incredible fiscal story to tell here by virtue of the office component. And I do think, I spoke to an aligned interest earlier, and I think it is really true, because we have to work together... we have to work together to make it successful. And as we've talked about in other forums, all the component pieces of this project work together to make it go. And if you overburden one of those components, you run the risk of a project that doesn't validate you as an office in commercial market and does exactly the opposite. So, we're not going to solve it tonight, but I can tell you confidently and assuredly, we hear what you're saying, we'll work with the staff, we've been working with Mr. Goff and Ms. Whitzman to tighten those numbers, and I think the next time you see us, we'll have a good, tight, solid answer. And we share your view of certainty and wanting assureness in the outcome. Want the same thing. I'm going to let Mr. Rick Hausler from Insight speak directly to the Creative Cauldron terms. We framed some of the basic points in the presentation about the term and the inclusiveness of some of the terms, but Rick has been closer to that deal, and I don't want to misstate anything.
The agreement, the letter intended with Creative Cauldron is intended to create a permanent residency, 20-year lease with extensions, extensions continuing in series, and we don't, either of us contemplated any conclusion to that. Of course, the building won't stand forever, but our intention is for this lease to stand as long as the building does, and we have created a structure that is much more economically feasible and user-friendly to the Creative Cauldron than what they have today. They're doing well where they are today. They're going to do better where they are tomorrow if they're in Broad and Washington. All the economic terms are better. The term is evergreen essentially, and we have done and committed to the, all the capital requirements to build out of the space, which is otherwise a huge fundraising burden or a debt burden if it's done through debt. So, we think we have expressed in the terms of our agreement with Creative Cauldron our belief that that's a key, permanent element of our project, and its level of certainty is as high as anything can be at this stage of development, and I call that very high. So, that's, we have specifically made those commitments with the purpose of making Creative Cauldron permanent and with the purpose of giving them certainty about where their new home's going to be under economic terms they know will work for them. So, I think that's about as much as I have ever said about any tenant in any project I've ever worked on because this is something, we all know this is something different.
Right, but if we're going to approve this as a special exception and one of the elements being Creative Cauldron, then we have to be assured that, in fact, it's a good and reasonable
Yes.
... arrangement from their standpoint.
They need to, they can validate that from their point of view, and I think you would want that, to hear that from them, that they agree with what I've just said.
So, I do want to come back to this issue about having the difference between building out space for a particular use and actually having that use in there paying taxes. So, appreciate the build-out, but what I'm interested in is the economics of this and getting those numbers right so I know what it is we're moving forward on.
I think we have committed to the restaurant use within the restaurant space built out.
You've committed to the use in building it out, but that's entirely different from the assurance of X amount of tax revenue
Sure, sure.
Coming from that.
People have to buy the food, yeah.
Right, right. So, and then finally, the neighborhood has made some requests. I appreciate that you met with them. Looks like you've done some things, but they've made a request, and I wondered if you could get back, and I don't want an immediate reaction tonight, but if you could get back with regard to what you've heard them ask for tonight.
Yes, and I think we have made some of those responses already, but we'd like to outline them in more detail and provide those details and responses to you, the council. I think we've had a good dialogue. We haven't been able to totally repeat and elaborate on it tonight, but I think we'd be pleased to do that in writing to the council and continue that reporting process till you feel you've reached a satisfactory point.
Other comments? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Since I gave you my 15-point memo in our last work session, I won't go into that sort of detail. I guess, two thoughts. One, let's just keep focused on, you know, what's right in front of us, and it seems to me like the schedule of trying to get the staff to assess your latest proposal, and I do think we ought to try to have staff at least get the fiscal impact on 4B by the end of June so that it could be put in the packet and considered at council on July the 10th as a reasonable target to aim at. I do think it would be important to communicate to the community that, you know, just because we're scheduling it for first reading on July the 10th does not mean we're going to approve it at first reading. Sometimes those two things are equated. The scheduling and the approving are two different things. We can schedule something and discuss it, and, you know, you all may read the room here and figure out you don't have four votes, and it's not really actually wise to proceed with a vote on first reading. We may decide among ourselves, we're not ready to go to a vote. I don't know what will happen on July the 10th, but I do think we need to keep the pace going even during the summer, as difficult as that may be. Now, having said that, and not to go too far down the road beyond that, board and commission input is very important. It would not be unusual for us to be considering a major development project right in the teeth of an election. If we need the summer board and commission meeting slots to, and early fall, or I guess it would be late summer because I count the first half of September as late summer, if we need basically from the middle of July through the middle of September for the boards and commissions each to have a fair turn, then I think that would be appropriate. And, you know, that would still land us sometime in early fall talking about whether the application is ready to be brought to second reading. That's just sort of how I would see one schedule possibly working out. The other thought, you gentlemen sat here for the earlier discussion about the project at Broad and West, which its middle name was aspirational. I live on the West End. Everything about the West End is aspirational because honestly, the West End has not changed much in the 35 years that I've lived in the city, and, you know, we're trying to do better. Here at this location, we're trying to do better. Key date that is coming up most immediately is tomorrow night at 7:00, when we will know who the candidates are going to be for the election. I've not seen an election here in the years that I've lived here that has not in some way been about residentializing our commercial areas, and you all are going to be flying right into the teeth of that. And you got a good story with the Arts District and Creative Cauldron and slipping up there to pick up the State Theater, but I'm telling you, in my opinion, you need to have a broader vision of that area, and you need to be able to tell a story that includes, you know, pure commercial development elsewhere downtown that, when taken together with this project that you're proposing, tells a story to the public that says, you know, we're not simply taking this marquee corner and making it 80% residential. I just, I personally don't think that is going to go over well. There's potential for that story to be told, and we all, you know, look forward to hearing more about opportunities elsewhere downtown, but those are just my thoughts for tonight.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Mr. Schultz, Mr. Duggan mentioned that one of the concerns that they have is nearby neighbors to the property is that their property values will go down once the development opens. Do we have any data from the Economic Development Office or the real estate assessor about what happens when mixed-use development comes in next to existing residential? My anecdotal impression is that property values go up, but again, I don't have any data on that either way.
That question has been asked before. It's a difficult analysis to do to relate to causality. What we don't have are any examples of property values going down associated to, next to development. If you ask the assessor next to, you know, when someone is spending $100 million or $80 million or whatever the number is on their property and making that investment, I think generally the view is that's going to be positive for the adjacent property owners. But to make that causal link based on sales data, I think, phasers are going to have a hard time saying exactly why one thing is happening versus other causal reasons. But we have not seen examples of property value.
That's good to know. Mr. Duncan took kind of what I was going to say, but during our earlier public comment period, I thought at first it was a shame that we were mixing comments about two projects together because it was getting a little confusing, but then I thought it was actually a good thing for you to hear what we're up against as a council, because what we're trying to do is keep the city sustainable and grow the city and bring in commercial development and also protect our residential neighborhoods and look at those red flags when a project comes before us and say, "Well," as, the word aspirational was a good word. Is this aspirational or is this real? And I think what we need from you is as much real as we can possibly get to be able to move it forward, because that previous project, we looked at for three years, and it went through a lot of different iterations, and by the end, as Mr. Massey said when he commented, it was good, and it was real, but it wasn't real enough, or it still needs a little more work. So, our concern, my concern as a council member who will have to vote on this is, I don't want to be in a position of having aspirational ideas out there without something more solid to back it up. And so that, and I'm certain that you can come up with the way to make that happen by July 10th or whenever our second reading is. I think this is a good project, and I think there's a lot of positives to it, but it would be great to have all those, the other things tied up better. And I am concerned about the Lawton Street neighbors, especially the ones right next to the property, and if there's a way you can step that down better, that would definitely be a positive.
Other comments from anyone? I, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. So, I just want to say thank you for being so responsive and coming back and following up quickly. I won't reiterate the concerns earlier, even though I do think they're important, between the Lawton setback in height, the retail assurances. The one thing that I think we talked about at work session that I didn't hear much progress on, and hopefully we will see some movement on, is the concern around the lack of kind of open public green space. I know you guys have kind of the second-floor plaza, but at the end of the day, still think that if you have to go through someone's lobby, it's just not going to feel public. And given that this is a really important corner for us, I think we want to make it feel open as possible and, you know, preserve as many trees and keep it green. So, you know, you could take the neighbor's comment on maybe the access from Lawton, potentially that being a green space, and look at other options, but I appreciate kind of the progress so far, and hopefully we'll continue to see more movement between now and July.
Other comments?
I appreciate you all making changes or addressing some of the comments from just a few days ago. I guess it was last week, maybe it seems like forever ago, but I think more work needs to be done, and I'm looking forward to getting some of these more issues flushed out. There's, you know, I don't know, three pages of comments, and you have addressed some of them, but some of them you haven't. And I'd like to see, I don't know if you have anything you want to say to that. It seemed like you're getting ready to dig it up, Mr. Hausler. Did you want to address anything?
Thank you for the climate change resolution. That's a piece of history.
That's good. Well, we appreciate that, and we appreciate you going from certified to silver, and we're looking forward to maybe even heading a little bit farther north than that. But I think there is more progress that can be made, and I hope that we will make that before our next get-together, because I think this project has a lot good going for it. You are a high-quality outfit with a high-quality team, and we appreciate that, but I do think more progress needs to be made. I don't want to reiterate the comments I made last week, but there are things like, you may have heard some of our conversation earlier about Founder's Row, and part of the reason that people ask you for certainty and want to know more is because people promise us things and then they don't happen. Or we have a building right now that the ground floor is empty, that we had discussed or we had a commitment to have a grocery store, and it's not happening right now. And so, there's a lot of reasons, a lot of nuances to that, but I think part of the reason you're getting the scrutiny and some of the questions, some of the comments you're getting are because we want to make sure that doesn't happen. We want to learn from each project we do to get better, just like you guys probably want to do the same thing, to learn from what you do to get better. And so, that's part of the reason why curated retail, for example, you know, what is that? I don't know. Is it local retail? Well, in local retail, we've got frozen yogurt shops, we've got nail salons, we've got a Hertz Rent-A-Car, and there's things that we probably don't want at local retail or wouldn't aspire to. And so, having more certainty as to what that's supposed to be will give, either excite people, or maybe people will say, "No, I'm not excited" about more local nail salons or whatever it is you might have in mind, but that's part of the reason why you're getting people telling you they want more certainty. It also helps us flush out the fiscal model. You're saying $1.4 million, which sounds pretty good. City staff plus weeks at a low number was in the twos, which is maybe a quarter of the Harris Cedar project. And so, those are the kind of information we want more certainty to because that helps us analyze your project. And right now, we're faced, as you may have heard in some of your prior meetings, with a lot of big school costs, and we've got to help pay for those things. And so, we've got to have our city and our development hit on all cylinders, because when it doesn't hit on all cylinders, then it makes us real hard for us to pay for $120 million high school. And so, for us, what happens on your ground floor particularly and above really impacts our costs, our service costs, for example, on which size bedrooms matter to us as a city, because those impact service costs. And so, I think there's more work to be done, and I hope you can understand why we're asking some of the questions and give you some of the comments that we do, because those things are important to our community. We're small, and we can't really afford to make mistakes in development, and so we try to learn from what we've done in the past. But I think you've got a lot of a good base that you're starting from, but I would hope we can make some more progress on some of the things that are still outstanding or that weren't addressed in this initial letter before we see you again, maybe on July 10th.
So, I don't know, does anyone else have anything else to say? Okay. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Is the schedule something that is open for discussion then?
Sure.
I don't think we need to set it up now. I think we have kind of established that the schedule's a little too tight. Do we need to come up with a new schedule from here, or is that something that we can work on going forward?
I would suggest that maybe we can take it up at the next mayor's agenda meeting and try to lay it out and pour it out and see if...
Thank you.
And I think has been said, but I'm just going to reiterate it again, that having information from staff is important, not just to us, but also, as you heard, to the public and to the process. And so, I would hope by, prior to the July 10th meeting, we'll have a pretty good analysis and not just the fiscal numbers, but of what else we've heard. I know you were saying it takes three to four weeks, and I hope that doesn't imperil our schedule, but I think it's important that the council and the public have some analysis of the information.
And if I could just clarify my remarks also, and start by saying, it makes me very glad to hear about the value of staff comments and the staff review. A lot of work goes into that, and so that warms my heart. When I say the four weeks, I'm talking about the, everybody in the city who has a role in this commenting on it. That's what takes four weeks. The planners and the EDO tend to be much more on the edge of their seat for these projects because their whole lives revolve around them for a period of time. Those comments get turned around much more quickly, but when you're asking for the civil engineers or the tree experts or the other subject matter experts, that's what takes a longer period of time, and those are usually on pretty granular areas. Those typically do fall behind on the process because there are always changes that happen before first reading and even before second reading, and very often, you don't get the benefit of a lot of that granular commentary, even though it is built into the process sort of, and certainly at site plan, all those comments get, and less sort of, that process, all that staff work, I think, gets incorporated into the site plan.
I suspect some, if not all of us, would not be comfortable voting on this on July 10th absent staff report, and so I guess I would just make that clear to you and to everyone else, that I think that's an expectation we probably have here. Anything else? Mr. Snyder?
Just, I would ask that... Just, I would ask the developer to keep meeting with the neighborhood, keep working on that. That's fundamental to get a win-win. Yeah, okay.
Okay, anything else to be said on this? Thank you for sticking with us for this late hour. We appreciate it, and let's look forward to more progress. Thank you so much. All right, what else do we have on our agenda? Nothing else, anything else to be said before we break? We have a motion to adjourn.
May I move to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.[1793.45][1793.45]